Invitation and Pledge of Allegiance. Well, that's me. Thank you all. (LAUGHING). Lord, bless us and help us. Oftentimes, we are pulled in many different directions. And I, speaking for myself, can say the frustration that I can feel at times. I ask that you help us make good decisions, that you allow us to do what is best for York County and its citizens, and that you be with us. I ask that you would be with law enforcement and all that are in harms way. Bless us and keep us all. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oath of office. Would Robert Burton please come forward? I have been requested...
(INAUDIBLE).
Oh, yeah. I want to skip that every time. Appearances. The York County Soil and Water Conservation Commission to present information regarding their award of outstanding district in the state.
Hello. My name is Beth White, 404 Pendergrass Road, York. And I'm here on behalf of the York Soil and Water Conservation District to let you know that all of our hard work and dedication of our county district has paid off. We received the 2018 Outstanding Conservation District Award for the entire state of South Carolina. And this pump was established in 2002 to recognize the South Carolina Conservation District that has excelled in protecting and enhancing the natural resources of their county. So we're excited that we received this honor, and we wanted to let you know that your dedication to us has paid off. We would like to give you a brief update of how we received this reward and what we did within the community. Our wonderful secretaries, Barbara and Laura, have established close to 100 garden programs in our local schools throughout the years. The district helps local farmers participating in NRCS and other conservation practices low-cost, custom-cut filter fabric. The district also assists the Fishing Creek Watershed Board on improvements and maintenance to the four watershed dams in our county. And we know that that is becoming great importance with all the rain that we're having lately. And then when DEHEC inspected these dams in 2017, our dams were deemed in pristine condition, so we're very proud of that. The district has also completed its emergency action plans for the dams. The district has partnered with the county stormwater staff and established a new coalition of regional water quality educators called the Upper State Stormwater Association. The district's mission is to advocate for agriculture and environmental stewardship, and we hope to continue to educate and raise awareness to our community. We host a variety of Arbor Day classes, poster contests for children, and classroom presentations on various conservation programs. Barbara, who is the backbone of our board, she presented to 244 classrooms from 2017 to 2018. This led to hiring a part-time education specialist to help her out to promote conservation in our county in 2018, so the district can wholeheartedly fulfill its mission. We also host a legislative dinner, which a few of you have attended every year, and we encourage all of our legislators from county to state and all local government to come and help us create a partnership to continue the growth but balance it with conservation and integrity. We would like to thank you again, each and every one of you, for always supporting us and understanding the importance to have conservation in our county. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.[366.12][366.12](APPLAUSE).
I'm sure Mr. Blackwell can fill us in on the use of a pump from his days as a child in the home.
(LAUGHING).
No, no, no. It was Dr. Black. There's still no one signed up for the public forum session, luckily. The consent agenda, I've been asked to pull out items 12, 15, and 26, which will go as new business 2, 3, and 4. Does anyone else have any other issues they would like pulled from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes. Public hearing. Counsel to hold public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 155, Sections 155.009 and 155.428, Section C, an order to amend the definition of major roads to comply with SC DOT standards, to increase the minimum lot width standards for new residential development on major roads from 100 to 350 feet, to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Anyone want to speak against? Please come up, give your name and address.
My name is Richard Compton. I currently live at 1952 St. Paul Church Road in Clover. And I'm... Oh, sorry. I'm a little tall. Is that better? 1952 St. Paul Church Road in Clover, and I'm building a new home in Rock Hill, so I'll be moving over there soon. The new ordinance, as well as the additional ordinances to be introduced soon, I'll try to answer one question. How do we slow development in York County? Or some would say, how do we better manage the development of York County? And it's no secret that the county has had a difficult time managing growth in places such as Fort... Excuse me, Fort Mill and Lake Wiley. Changing the road frontage requirements, along with the additional steps to control development that the staff have advocated for, which we learned about in the workshop that we had recently, they will, in fact, slow development. However, they will achieve this at the cost of the western part of the county. These changes will greatly limit how land can be developed, mainly by steering most development to the use of interior roads. Most would agree that the use of interior roads and reducing driveways or curb cuts is a good thing, as do I. However, what these changes, as they are currently proposed, will do is create the perfect environment for tract neighborhoods. I personally do not like tract-style neighborhoods. I would rather see small builders like myself and the people that I work with build neighborhoods and keep the heart and economic impact here in the county. But these changes will push us out and really allow the tract builders to prosper in most areas of the county. These changes will dramatically impact the western part of the county. The changes will make it so that landowners who do not have access to water and sewer and will not for many, many years to come will have very few options as to how they can develop their land besides large tracts of farmland. It will flood the populated areas of the county with more tract homes, and it will reduce the western part of the county to farmland. That's what, in my opinion, these changes would do. I'm not saying that development regulations in the county are not in need of change. However, these changes do not seem to be the best solution to me. The current county standards for interior roads is one major issue that no one seems to be talking about, and I would... If you want developer... If you want developers to utilize interior roads, there needs to be a change to how they can build them. I would propose that instead of just changing the road frontage, forcing them to then use interior roads, that there would be a better system that they could use to develop how interior roads are built and managed. A tiered system, you know, 1 to 5 lots would require a certain type of road, and 5 to 10 would require a certain type of road, and so on and so forth. The way it's currently written, they just have to be up to county standards, which would be the same standards as any normal traffic road, not just a neighborhood road. It's just one idea that would encourage interior roads and reduce curb cuts, which, after all, is the goal of this ordinance. And simply, there are many ways to control and better manage development, and there's ways to do it that are good for the entire county, not just a Band-Aid fix for issues in certain areas. And it's my hope that the county would... The council would find other ways to move forward to manage growth and better grow the county than to take away property owners' rights. So I just hope that you guys would look in other ways than just changing the road frontage. I think there's smarter ways to do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else against?
Good evening, counsel. Andy Smith, 8270 Park Place Road. Appreciate y'all's time and including us in the workshop we had a month or so ago. I think it was very productive, but I'd just like to ask you not to change it. You know, it sounds simple, just when you change minimum road frontage, but there's so much involved in other ways. For instance, York County's tried to prevent flag lots. So therefore, if we change the road frontage to 350 feet, it's got to be 350 feet all the way back. It can't narrow in or get wider, and that's, you know, going to be hard to do. So we're talking, you know, if we do 350 feet of road frontage, then we're talking a couple of acres per lot, 3... I forgot what the math was, but 3 acres. Another thing we've heard mentioned a lot is you can apply for a variance if this is passed at 350, which is not true. You can apply for a variance, but there's no guarantee you're going to get it because in order to receive a variance, you have to meet 4 requirements by state law, and those can't be met. So sure, you can apply for it, but there's no hope that you could even get approved. I think Ms. Cox came up with a good point during one of the workshops about the problem with needlessly stored road and the houses being too close to the roads preventing the road from being widened. That's a simple fix. It could be, if you enlarge the front yard setbacks on these roads that are deemed to be widened for future growth, would be a simple solution than widening the road frontage requirement. Basically, it's like rezoning everybody's property by increasing this road frontage And we've talked a lot about family exemption, and I think there's a lot of confusion to the family exemption ordinance because you had to own the property prior to 2002 to be able to subdivide a section of that off without meeting the 350-foot minimum road frontage. And there's a lot of people that has come to York and bought property since '02, and they wouldn't qualify for that. So if they have children and don't have 350 feet per... of road frontage per child, there's no way you could do the family exemption to create them a place to build on farm. Now, there was some mention about 20-year rollback, and I, you know, I think that's a move in the positive direction and do away with the '02 part of it. But I think that's about all that I had down here. But I appreciate your time, and I wish you would consider and just not approve of this unless find a different way that doesn't impact the western side of York County the way this does.
Ms. Chairman, he mentioned 4 requirements. Could he share those with us? If you... If someone had to apply for a variance, you know, what would be some of those requirements to get that variance or exception?
I'll be delighted.
Yeah. I'd like to hear those.
According to state law, you have to meet 4 requirements to... And they are... Appendix A is there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece and property. B is these conditions do not generally apply to other property in the vicinity. C is because these conditions, the advocate of this chapter, the particular piece of property would effectively prohibit and unreasonably restrict the utilization of the property. And number 4 is the authorization of the variance would not be substantial detrimental to adjacent property and to the public good, and the character of the district will not be harmed by the granting of the variance.
Can we get staff to send that out to everyone so we kind of have an idea of what the requirements?
We'll ask staff to send everyone state law on variance.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else against?
Hey, my name's Tony Smith, 4249 Share Road, Sharon, South Carolina. Appreciate y'all giving us the time to speak tonight. Just wanted to add on a few things that Ricky and my dad said there. One thing that really scares me about this deal, and it kind of goes... We sat through the workshop, so I may not be on the right ordinance here. But it was in regards to, like I said, we were... It was all together in the workshop. The road frontage thing, you know, in Lake Wiley and Fort Mill is one thing. In the western side of the county, it's something completely different. I don't feel like we could lay the same blanket policy over Pleasant Road in Fort Mill that we can... I was using Carson Road as an example. We took that off the list. Thank you. But the thing about lot splits, so if you're more than 5 lots, you're considered a major subdivision. Out here on the western side of the county, if... What we see a lot of is old farms that, you know, we sell a few lots on the road frontage. And a lot of times, I think that's how, you know, these farmers have gotten by over the years. You know, they've sold an acre to get by this year. We might not have had a good crop and sell this piece of land. That's the last thing that they want to do, but sometimes it just comes down to it. What you see here is, you know, if you cut... I'd much rather see 5 lots or 6 lots, in this case, cut off a road frontage than I would to stick a stipulation on it, say, if you're more than 6 lots, then you've got to build an interior road. Because then what we're going to see out here is your builders come in and have to build a road. Well, roads are expensive, and the only way to pay for those roads are to get more lots. So if, just for example, say we had a 30-acre tract, and we could have cut 6 lots off the road frontage, well, now we're going to develop that whole 30 acres. So we're not going to have 4 or 5 houses built on the road frontage and still have a family farm in the back. We're going to have to sell this whole tract of land and develop the whole tract of land to pay for this road. So I just wanted to give you all an example of something that I've heard some people talk about around here, and I thought was a pretty good point, but just ask you to take that in consideration when making your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else against? Looks like Reagan will finally get to the podium tonight.
(INAUDIBLE) Craig, 1804 Craig Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I don't know whether I'm for or against this, to be perfectly honest with you, because I don't know which list to be using. If you go, there was an original list that came out that had the DOT picks, and I've been getting these from Christie. And since we found out this was going on, then there was another list. Is there a third list as well?
The third list, I think, is what is currently in place before the pending ordinance.
The 350, and the list arose. Because then you see things that seem a little odd. When you look at the damage to the list, I heard Andy talk about can't have flagpole lots, can't have this since 2002. I've got a doctor near me that's been there since 2002, AGC Land. The property was divided 3 times. He's... Since then, has divided it 3 times again for his kids. He has no... I don't think he's got 350 feet of road frontage. They're putting in the third house with 2 driveways, and I don't really care. It doesn't bother me. I really don't care. What does bother me is out on Marshall Road, it's 350 feet, and then you head towards Mount Holly Church. And before you get there now, Mr. Heeline's popping them up, the peach and the gray and the green and, you know, houses with all the driveways. It's 45 miles narrow down Marshall Road. There's no rhyme or reason or fairness to what goes on when you turn around and tell somebody else that you've got to have 350 feet. Now, one of the prime examples of this mess is 324, where it turns into McFarland on the way over here. McFarland Road down on this end, I heard they were putting in houses, a developer or builder was allowed to put in houses on 100-foot driveways distances. Up around 324, back up into Black Jacks, it's 350. That's always been the state DOT rules. Then I hear that, okay, we're going to do something in the middle. We're going to do maybe 200, maybe 225 feet. I don't think y'all ready on this yet, is what I'm getting at, because I've seen no data from the DOT. If you call them and say, what's a collector road, they'll tell you, that's where the school buses go. Okay? And it's also based on the speed limit and the number of cars. Who's done TIA's on all these roads? Where's the data? What's this based on? Because then I have a question as a taxpayer. What happens when a... These people that are down here on the end of McFarland, one of them pulls out the 100-foot driveway that ain't 350 feet apart, and you have a major wreck. Who's liable? Is DOT liable?[1262.15][1262.15](LAUGHING). They're going to say, eh-eh, 350. We done told you. It's on you guys. Does anybody know the answers to that? The reason I'm throwing this out here is not to pick on anybody, it's to try to make you think. Does anybody know the answers to these questions? And then you look at the list before and after, and I came Cameron Road. Cameron Road on the DOT list in '01 was a collector road. It's now not. It's a minor road, and I want somebody to tell me the difference between Cameron Road and Straight Road over there where I live, which is a collector road. And then a Spray Rock Road that I have some land on called Alton Road, it's not... It's maybe a mile long. It's a collector road. And then Craig Road where I live, it cuts from 72 to Marshall Road. It's a through road. It's about a mile and a half, 2 miles long. It's a minor road. Y'all see the mess that's going on out there? Now, this is mostly out in the countryside and over towards York. And when you look at the list before and the after, they're being removed from the DOT list. So my question is, is what's the criteria? Where's the data? Because I see a lot of... I would think it'd be errors, because otherwise, it's just flat-out not fair to change something on somebody on the same road. If you go down Ogden Road, if you look at it on the list, we get to the Rock Hill City Limits, it's called an arterial. When it gets right there at Robertson Road and everything, it's still... It turns purple, which is a collector, but not until you get to Redwood Road, which is a road to the left. Ogden Road is still Ogden Road, is still the same lanes, same speed limit, same everything. The only thing I can figure is Redwood Road on the left is in the Rock Hill City Limits, I think, the bottom end of your district bump. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Well, why is... Why is when you get down past Redwood and you go into 324, it's now no... It's going to be 200 feet on that one instead of 350? They don't slow down on Ogden Road until they get to Mobley Store, which is on the other side. And that should... Might be a little bit... But my question once again is, based on what data? Is this about safety, or is it about traffic? I mean, you know, nobody knows. And you've got several lists. So all I'm saying is, I don't know whether I'm for or against it, because I ain't got enough information to decide. And like, I wonder, do y'all? Has it really been... This seemed like a simple thing, I think, and everybody looked at it, but it gets real complicated when you start telling somebody what they can and can't do with property with growth in York County. So anyway, thank you for your time. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak against?
Hello.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Naomi Keller. I live at 5009 Billy Wilson Road, York. I actually live... One side of my side is Rock Hill, and the other side's York. So everyone gets confused where I live at. But anyhow, love York County. I live out in the county where I want to be because I can decide what's good for me and my family. Now, I understand that you're concerned about development, and we all are. The roads are getting busier, and we've got more and more people here because they love our state. However, when you go to an elderly person who has farmland, and I'm a farm person, okay, and you tell them, you now can't divide your family land up because you have to have 350 feet per person, okay? If I got 1,000 feet on the road, I have 50 acres, who do I pick to give my children land and who I don't? Is that going to make a big difference? Maybe I just sell my land to a developer and then put 100 homes on there. Is that going to help with the traffic? Don't think so. I understand that we want the land. We want the traffic better. But think about it. At 100, and I myself would never use 100 road frontage, but at 100 feet, that 50 acres, if I have 1,000 feet, I have 50 acres. I can do 10. Or I can do the 350, and I can have 2. So I want 2 houses, 10 houses, or 100-plus? These decisions you make affect us. We live here because we love where we live. Please take in this consideration, but I do thank you for your time.
Good evening, counsel. Tim Heeline, 1830 Hansmile Highway. I appreciate your time, and I've talked to several of you and the staff about the concerns of this. And first of all, Mr. Craig, I'm not building any houses on Marshall Road.
Well, I thought you said lots, that's what you said. Oh, really?
But number 2, I'm... The internet got hit in Rock Hill pump. You probably know that. And I was at one... My daughter got married this weekend. I just got back today. I came back early for this because it's very important, and didn't have any internet, so couldn't print up what I wanted. So I got to go off of my phone some. But a couple of things I wanted to say was, in talking with staff, and I've heard, you know, you're sort of talking about maybe going to 200 feet on some of the roads. It sounds like there's been somewhat of a compromise because of all the concern. And I got asked at one of the meetings, at the end of the meeting, how many roads have I built in the county? I own a real estate company. I specialize in land and have bought land and sold it and have mostly sell people's land. If somebody has some land, they want to sell it, we'll rezon some land form or we'll make lots. Well, I haven't built any roads, and I didn't... I couldn't answer quick. I wasn't thinking about what to tell a person that asked me. But I've probably created several dozen country lots via through clients' land or land that I've purchased with other folks, and we've sold it and built houses on it, had houses built on it. We've fulfilled people's dreams of getting them land, and not one size fits all on this road frontage deal. But when you can subdivide off a piece of land and do it properly, you're saving the county money. These people that are owning these houses, they're above-average earners. They're not bringing any expense to the county as far as road cost goes. They're spending money here for services and goods. They're increasing the property taxes, and you are still somewhat maintaining a semi-countryfield when the family doesn't want to farm anymore because the kids don't want it. They should be able to get their money from it. And, excuse me, I can't see real good off the phone, but I think by doing this, and I echo the same things that everybody else has said before, this is a big deal. You know, I think you're going to decrease a lot of property owners' property, and they don't even know it yet. And they're going to find out when I would get a call or another realtor would get a call to sell their land or to go look at buying it, and you've got to give them less because maybe you can't... The splits have changed so much, you know? And a number, again, I've heard is, you know, maybe 200 feet on those roads, but that's still 100% increase. They're spending money here for services and goods. They're increasing the property taxes, and you are still somewhat, um, maintaining a semi-country field when the family doesn't wanna farm anymore because the kids don't want it. They should be able to get their money from it. And, excuse me, I can't see real good off the phone, but I, I think by doing this, and I echo the same things that everybody else has said before, this, this is a big deal. You know, I think you're gonna decrease a lot of property owners' property, and, and they don't even know it yet. And they're gonna find out when I would get a call or another realtor would get a call to sell their land or, or to go look at buying it, and you gotta give them less because maybe you can't, the splits have changed so much, you know? And a number, again, I've heard is, you know, maybe two hundred feet on, on those roads, but that's still a hundred percent increase. I, I wish I could get a hundred percent increase in my pay. That would, that would be good. That a hundred percent is a lot. I, I think, I, I think on land, I, I was, been talking to several people, but I think if you took a tiered approach where, and I, and I do believe something needs done. I think on a lot of these roads, a hundred foot, it, it is too narrow. But just going as, as high as you wanna go is, is, is the extreme. I believe also, I don't know, who said about the setback? Andy? I believe too, when you're making country lots, an acre or better, you should be off the road some. They should be fifty, maybe seventy-five feet off the road because you still have a nice backyard. At a hundred and fifty foot wide on a lot, seventy-five foot setback, you still have hundred, hundred and fifty-plus feet, I believe, for your backyard, for your septic system because there aren't gonna be utilities out, uh, on a lot of these roads. On, I was thinking about a tiered deal where if, if you did that, like, if you were doing an acre lot, which you have to have an acre in the county where you don't have utilities for a septic system and for a well. If you went to just a hundred and fifty foot of road frontage on an acre lot, that's a nice depth-to-ratio lot. A good uniform-sized lot. And maybe do a deal where maybe one point one acre to five acres, maybe you do your two hundred foot because you still are gonna have a nice depth-to-ratio lot when you go a little bigger lot. And then your five acre lots, like Andy was saying, uh, if you make that two hundred, three hundred, your, your driveway's ten, twelve foot wide. Why have all that? And somebody wants to get back to their five acres, why suck up all that land if someone's gonna make lots in, in a driveway? And in your five acre lot, staff also said, "Well, how can you keep them from building in that hundred foot?" You put it on the survey. As that hundred foot area is, call it the flag lot or the flag pole, that's a no-build zone. You can't build in that, in that hundred foot area. You have to get back to maybe a hundred and fifty or two hundred foot for your, uh, your building site. But I, I do, I think, I think that a hundred percent increase, if it is even gonna be two hundred's a lot, but I do think you, you guys are in a powerful position. And like Mr. Craig said, there's a, there's a ton of roads, there's a ton of unknowns, and it's a, it really is a big deal in what you're doing. I know you wanna make a vote tonight. I know you'll make a decision. Just, the three fifty is for sure too big, and these roads still aren't exactly settled in, in my opinion. That, that's it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, counsel. I'm Bo Ziegler. Uh, I live at thirteen ninety-eight Saddle Drive, um, and I'm against. Um, I'm also against, um, we tried to, to, we asked some folks to push this meeting. I don't know why this meeting had to happen tonight on spring break. We look around, we've got pretty good turnout, but I imagine that you didn't want the turnout that you might have if everybody was in town. Um, and that's not proper. And we asked to push this off because it's important, um, and, and we couldn't do that. So, I think that's a bad decision on your part. It's kinda like, um, national politics where you drop it on Friday at five o'clock if it really smells bad. So, just wanna tell you that that's the way I feel about that piece of it. Um, I have a client right now that I'm gonna build a home for on thirty-two acres of land. He has a unique flag lot. The lot is a hundred and thirty feet wide on the road, goes back about five hundred feet, and then opens to create thirty-two acres. That project is not causing a developmental, you know, crisis in York County, but that project would be dead and useless under the new road guideline. There are a lot of properties that are affected that I don't think that your intent would be to affect, um, but it's going to do it. And to just kinda have the, to, you know, it's hard for you not to have a blanket policy where this one works, this one doesn't, this one works, and you can pick and choose who does and doesn't. But to have a blanket policy also makes a lot of properties in, in this particular piece not function the way that they should. You take away a lot of people's value to their land, um, and I think it really, really takes consideration. But you have, uh, I would go back to the point that you have some very important issues on your agenda tonight, um, and it really, really would've been proper to be able to have, um, uh, everybody that would like to attend be here. I'm attending and pushing off my family's vacation for a day to be here to see exactly what's going on at this meeting. That's all I've gotta say.
Anyone else against? Anyone in favor? Do I have a motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
New motion?
Motion to deny, whoops, sorry.
Ms. Cox.
I would make a motion that we defer this until the council meeting.
There's a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion, Ms. Cox.
This issue is one that this council took up months and months ago. And from what I understand, from all of the builders that I reached out to, and I reached out to the HBA, I reached out to Tim, I reached out to Bill Hargrove, I reached out to all the folks who would, who would talk to me. And my understanding from all of those discussions was that they agreed that something needed to be done, that it needed to be about a hundred and fifty feet. That's what they would agree on. So, I, I guess I wanna start with that. One of the things that frustrates me is, I know, as council members do, we're up here, we're not trying to take any property rights. We're trying to, to do what's right. But there are problems, and what we're trying to do is learn from the problems that have happened in Fort Mill, with one sixty, and we're trying to plan better. And I think that, you know, I hope that you all understand that. I own property on one of these roads that's gonna be affected. I'm not taking this lightly. I'm doing this because I think it's the right thing to do to look at it. But most of the folks that came up here said, "Don't do anything," when in reality, the majority of the builders are saying, "We need to at least do one fifty." So, to me, the answer is somewhere between one fifty and two hundred, and I agree with Mr. Heeline that there needs to be a setback. Twenty-five feet of setback on any road is probably too little, especially if it's not a minor road. So, I, I think that's important for us to take a look at that issue. I was prepared to move forward and to vote on something tonight, but my concern came down to the fact that the current ordinance that we operated before we started this, this, this existing ordinance that we're under pending ordinance was basically, it identified the roads in, in the ordinance itself. We didn't defer to SCDOT. Our pending ordinance, however, what we started with said that we're gonna defer to SCDOT. That's what we've been operating for, and I don't remember when first reading was done, but that's what we've been operating for, for months now. And Wednesday, we get this list that's, you know, six days before third reading, that we're switching from the SCDOT standards because there are problems, and honestly, there are problems. There's some, there's some problems with that SCDOT list because I don't live here, they don't have to enforce it. But at the same time, we, we as council members and you as the public don't get an opportunity to determine why was that changed? So, that's the reason why I moved to defer, because I do think that there are some questions. I, I would ask that we get an explanation as to why we're not following SCDOT standards. What was the reason for the changes? It looks like to me that we dropped at least thirteen roads, that we picked up twenty-nine roads. Part of those were from the original ordinance that wasn't included in the list we were originally given. But I would like to know the criteria for why we dropped and add, added folks. And it looks like we also moved five roads from a collector to a main arterial. I, I don't think that it's a good idea for us to make a decision when that significant amount of change has happened in just the very last week without us at least giving, getting an explanation from staff as to why we're doing that. I would ask that the road list, that now that we're moving towards a list, that list be posted on the website so that folks can take a look at that. I, I would ask that we also, so, look at, since the developers are the ones here saying, "We need to do seventy-five foot setback, let's do it. Let's go ahead and get that ball rolling," because that, that combined with something at least a minimum of one fifty may fix the problems that we're trying to remedy. And that we also get an explanation of the changing of the road. I'll say this. As someone who is going to be personally affected by this, I think it's critical that we look at this thoughtfully, that we give folks an opportunity to look at it. But with all due respect, some of the concerns that were raised by the folks that came up here and voted in opposition were remedied by a family exemption. That, that would've covered, what I understand, the individual who came up and talked about that. And there was one other individual who came up and asked a question about something that I think would've been covered by one of the other provisions. It's not gonna be three fifty if the family exemption applies. And so, any of the folks who have specific examples, specific examples of how this ordinance improperly affects you or your client, I'm asking that you get with David Hudson in the next two days so that we can determine whether or not there is truly a problem or whether there's a fear that this is going to create a problem. So, I'm, I'm encouraging you to reach out and make sure that we can figure out if that truly is a problem or not.
Mr. Winkler.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't, I almost spoke over you. Didn't mean to do that. Uh, I was just trying to speak up quick enough, and I was gonna make a motion to kill this whole thing and start over, but, um, I didn't speak quite, quick enough. So, um, I've pretty much opposed this. I think part of the problem was the first reading, we did something as a council that, um, I'm ashamed to say, uh, we were told this affects major roads, and I know Chairman, or former Chairman Blackwell spoke out against this, but, um, and we did it with a pending ordinance doctrine. And so, since October, we've enforced three hundred and fifty feet frontage requirements, um, under a pending ordinance doctrine, and we keep changing the, the list of the roads. Well, I think unless the, you know, that, we didn't have a list of any roads, I believe, at that time. We were told it was major roads. Uh, we voted for it. Then we got the list of the roads afterwards, and it wasn't all major roads, um, in my opinion. And I've voted against it every time since then and spoken out against it as much as I could. I was glad to see some roads removed from it, but there's still more roads in my district that, if you go ride them, they're not major roads. Some of them are not much more than a gravel road the way they've been maintained lately. So, you know, i- if I can't kill it tonight, I'll support postponing it for now because I think it needs more work. But, uh, you know, I, I, I haven't been happy with it since I saw the list of roads. It drastically affects my district, and, and I know we're, we're trying to fix problems in other districts, but, um, I believe we're creating some different problems for people in the rural parts of the district. And, um, you know, I, 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 I just can't support it for, for what it does in my district.
Mr. Roddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I, I wanna address a couple, couple of the, um, speakers that came up. I did try to, I did put out for us to kinda postpone this meeting, but since it was already publicized, the next best option was gonna be to hold another public hearing. And I think that's what I was prepared to do today because I was contacted by so many people that said they couldn't be here due to spring break, family obligations, whatever. And my wife asked me why we're having a meeting during spring break, so I had to answer that at my own home, so. But one, I made a couple of notes as, as people were speaking. Uh, the first thing, we, one thing I don't wanna do is devalue anybody's property. I think that's one of the worst things that we can do as a, as a body, because if we think we're solving one problem and create another one for a different set of people, then we've, we've solved nothing. That's, that's one thing that's high on my priority list. And I think the planning commission, if I'm not mistaken, um, recommended a hundred and fifty feet change, if I'm not mistaken. Am I, am I correct? I'm thinking, David, I can only see the top of your head. Did the planning commission somewhat recommend the change be a, a one fifty? Or did I get some bad information?
Be quite honest, I don't remember. It's been several months since we had that, um, planning commission meeting.
Uh, I know when we first got started on this, I met with, with Tim, Tim Heeline, and, and he mentioned then, when we first got started, at us looking at some kinda tiered approach. And it was a, a short, brief conversation, uh, but I, I kinda liked his idea. It made sense because everybody, um, is not gonna be in the same lot situation. You got different, different scenarios. And the one thing I heard a lot from people, uh, definitely builders and, and even personal landowners, was that everybody's lot is not shaped in a square or rectangle. You know, when you got these, um, pie-shaped lots or awkward-shaped lots, and it makes it difficult. In some cases, we're automatically putting people in a situation where we have to, they have to come ask for a variance or a special exception just to be able to build on a, on their property, um, if we make some drastic changes. So, that was a concern of mine as well. As everyone knows throughout the county, we're, we're battling with tremendous growth, and, and I think this type of increase from one hundred to three fifty or anything drastic really does more harm than it does good. And, and some of the things that, that Reagan brought up tonight, uh, just throughout, you know, we don't have this as solid as it needs to be to go forward. And, you know, when you hear those kinda concerns, um, it makes you say, "Let's pump the brakes," you know? And if, if Robert would've got his motion in to, to scrap this plan tonight and start over, I, I think he would've gotten enough support, uh, to just start over. And the one thing that I think, anytime we, we, we start out with an ordinance that automatically invokes the pending doctrine ordinance, I think those are the ones we really need to be careful because we've set, we've set for several months now, people having to meet these requirements, and here we are today talking about not even doing them. So, anyone who was coming in for a building permit or doing anything on those particular streets that require three fifty, you know, that we caused them to do something that they otherwise would've done different had the pending doctrine ordinance been in place. And, and, um, I wasn't too told on supporting it initially because of that, because I know things change as we massage them and work on them and hear from the public and, and people who have a special interest in what we do. I didn't like the fact that the pending doctrine ordinance kicked in right away, but it's something that goes along with what we're doing. But if, we, we've probably put a lot of people in some, some tough situations who've been trying to go through the building process on some of these roads. Me personally, I would, I would like to scrap the plan, start over, and let us get a little bit more research. Let us find out exactly what we're doing because in the end, someone's property is gonna be, uh, affected one way or another to the point where it's gonna hurt somehow. But if, if we're doing more harm than good, I think we just need to pull back and make sure that we're doing, uh, more good than harm with anything that we, we set forth. Because even when we started taking out the, the UD zoning, you know, I heard from people that this thing flew below the radar, they weren't aware of it. So, um, if, if Robert still wants to make that motion, you know, I would, I would certainly be glad to second it if he ever gets back around to it. But I just think we need to pull back, get this thing nailed down right, and make sure we're doing the right thing for not just builders, but for property owners and our general citizens and even people who are looking to, to come here. Let, let's show them that we listen to our citizens, we listen to our stakeholders. We listen, and we, we've heard, and I'm sure everyone up here has heard from everyone across the spectrum about, "Are you sure you're doing the right thing at the right time?" You know, obviously, we wanna control growth, but let's do it the right way. And I, I would love to see, um, us pull back at this point and say, "Hey, let's start over. Let's make sure we get right out the gate and not change up midstream."
Chairman Johnson, could I ask for a point of order?
Mr. Winkler.
Uh, just wanna make sure that I understand and that the public understands, since I did not get the motion in in time, I cannot make that motion unless this motion fails, correct?
You can make a motion to amend this motion if you are so inclined.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to amend this motion to a denial of third reading.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
We will now vote on the amendment to make the main motion a denial. All those in favor say aye?
Are we having discussion?
A discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Love.
You know, it's the things that we never get around to doing because we've got groups of people who don't like what we're doing. What's that saying about not being able to please all the people all the time, but we can please some of the people most of the time, maybe? I mean, we can't even please you on when we have a meeting because of a spring break. And we've had a workshop, Mr. Ziegler, I don't know if you were at that workshop or not. I don't know if you've reached out to your council member. I don't know, and I don't care. All I know is, it's very important to get this right. It's important that, it is important that we hear from you, but the other thing that's the most important is that we do something and that we not keep stalling on things because the majority of phone calls that come in to me are not people, are, they're not, it's not the builders and the developers who are wanting to do something. It's the people who are unhappy because of what we have. It's the people who are unhappy because of what we have allowed to be built and the fact that they are sitting in traffic for hours, sometimes trying to get home in Lake Wylee. And council members, some of those small roads that you're talking about, first of all, these aren't really small roads, but you know what? Your small roads are going to become Lake Wylee roads a lot faster than you think. It's like planning a wedding. Things start moving a whole lot faster. And so my concern is, you know, as I look at the Lake Wylee and Clover area, there are not even that many roads that we're talking about here. And we do have a problem with awareness, but we also have an issue of people using kind of scare tactics, to scare tactics, tactics to scare people into coming to meetings like this and calling the county and asking questions of what about their property rights? And, you know, when you have a group of people and everybody is a developer, and I, you know what, I respect you and it's not that I'm not developer-friendly, but I want you to do the very best things that you can do. And sometimes council has to make hard decisions to ensure that that happens for everybody else that lives in this county. So, you know, I'm certainly not going to go back to the drawing board on this. I think we've put a lot of work into it. I'm happy to have a zoning committee meeting and hear from everybody that wants to come and with, you know, the planning director there, I'm happy to call that meeting for next week and listen to every single person that wants to come for as long as that takes. But to not do something is the biggest mistake this council can make. And, you know, the time that it takes us to not do something is the craziest thing I've ever, that's just crazy to me. We work, we've been working on this since last fall. So look at the time, and I don't know how you fix that time and how we hear from people any sooner, but something's wrong when we spend this much time and to not do anything. And I just, it's very frustrating for me. I think this is a very needed thing. I don't think we're taking away property rights. I think we are maybe limiting what some developers and builders can do with property that they purchase from people. So, you know what, there need to be some limitations. You know, again, Chairman Johnson, I'm happy to call that meeting and, you know, it's like, I guess like a little mini public hearing. We had one, we had a workshop and that was pretty well-attended. But again, it was developers and builders that were at that workshop. So, you know, I'd like to hear from some of the people. We gave them a phone number to call and when they saw the Facebook posts that were against this, they called. And most of them weren't even affected by this. So I just think to back down off of this and to not do anything is the worst thing that this council could do.
Dr. Blackwell.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate the points Ms. Cox made. I am concerned that we have been waiting for months and then we get this the middle of last week and then we have to kind of take it in addition to our other 500 pages we had to prepare for. But, and per Mr. Winkler, I was definitely not for this in terms of the pending ordinance. Pending ordinance means it's enforced that minute. And then it just depends on what the council does later in terms of whether it gets dissolved. But in the meantime, it's enforced before we even have three readings. But, and I agree with Ms. Love, we have a problem. But when we deal with a blanket policy, we have a lot of people we have to look out for. So that being said, I was accepting and will not accept more than 150-foot curb cut. I mean, that's a 40% or so reduction. And that with a setback, I think, would help. And it would be, in most of the ways, fair. But anytime we're making a decision like this, especially with a blanket policy, you've got to try to be somewhat conservative because when government takes something, it never gives it back. So, you know, I am concerned about the private property owner's rights, but I do accept the fact we have an issue, so I want to take it in a slow, soft approach and not take a big bite. So I want it to be fair to the citizens. As far as the motion, I'm getting kind of fatigued that, you know, I kind of don't want to go all the way back and start over again. I understand the logic and I appreciate the logic, but I want to get this done and be done with it. So I'm not going to support what's proposed, the 200 feet. So I'm kind of in the middle right now. I'm not going to, I'd rather us move on and not delay this any longer. So both delay it one way or the other, but.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mr., Dr. Blackwell has the floor.
Well, I was just going to say, since the motions are as is, unless I hear a new one, probably going to disagree with both.
I would prefer at this time that we, unless anyone else has any other comments, that we at least vote on Mr. Winkler's motion and then anyone can make any additional motions they want at that point. Because all this is, is to make this go forward as a main motion. So if we vote it through, we're still going to have another vote to kill it, so.
I agree with that. I would like to have some more discussion on this amendment, though.
Here's the reason why I'm not going to vote to kill it, for the same reasons that Dr. Blackwell has mentioned. Number one, we've already come so far. The problem that I had with this ordinance is that the roads changed at the last minute. That's a problem for me. I think that should be a problem. From a public transparency standpoint, you need to have an opportunity to take a look at these roads before we do it. I'm willing to do that because I think it's the right thing to do. With that said, from all of the developers I've talked to and builders, they agree, there's a problem. We got to fix it. And I've heard 150 is something they're willing to accept. So to me, that's the floor we're looking at. We don't need to backtrack and not get anything done. Here's the problem. Minor roads are 100 feet of road frontage, minor roads. That's like roads out and who don't have any access to other roads. Major arterial roads are 350 feet, set by DOT. Surely, our major collector roads shouldn't be 100 feet, like with our miners. That causes a problem. That causes a major problem for safety for our citizens and it causes a problem with development of property and with 25-foot setback. That just, it impinges upon all of the folks' rights to develop that. In addition to the fact that our county finance director has told us for every house that doesn't value at $250,000, that we're, all of us, you, all of us in this room are subsidizing that house because it falls below the amount that's necessary to pay for just the county services is a reason why we as taxpayers should care about this issue. This isn't about a taking. This is about making sure that whatever we approve makes sense to every taxpayer. And so for that reason, I will not, and I do think that there is legitimate reason for us to consider this. The problem I have is the last-minute changing of the roads, and so I will not support us starting back over at zero.
Anyone else who'd like to speak about the amendment? Mr. Roddy.
I'll just be real brief. This is so difficult because if you look at the Clover-Lake Wylee area, you look at the York area, you look at the Rock Hill area, we're trying to come up with something that fits all areas. It's going to be real challenging to do because the issues that Allison faces in her area, I don't face in my area. It hurts Robert's area if we do it. So we're trying to come up with a blanket situation, a blanket ordinance that fits everybody's situation. It's going to be real tough to do. And one thing I do want to point out, just because we're starting over or we're being asked to start over, doesn't mean all that information we've collected goes out the window and you start over information-wise. We have that information. Let's use that information to tailor something that works pretty much across the board for everybody. I mean, we don't want to go to the extreme of saying, let's do overlays. We want to have an ordinance that fits across the board. And I think Allison has something she's going to put out, you know, somewhere around the 150, including different numbers on the setbacks. You know, so we're not starting over from zero. We're taking the information that staff has worked on for several months to put together that, something that looks a lot different from 350 feet or 300 feet or 250. Let's take what information that we already have and massage this to get to the point that we need to be. We're not starting over from zero saying throw all the data out the window. Let's use what we've collected and go forward. And I think the 150 with some different setbacks, push these houses off the road, I think we have a winner. You know, and that's kind of what, I don't want to say starting over, would do for us. If we can, I guess, change this to 150 and go forward at 150. You know, that's basically around the ballpark because we don't need to leave everything at 100 feet. You know, if we're coming in at 150 and, please correct me if I'm wrong, I heard somewhere along the way in the months to pass that 150 was what was recommended from the planning commission. So that's, I just want to put that out. We're not starting over from scratch. We're taking the information that staff's worked on for several months and centering that information around a 150, 175 curb cut.
Thank you, Ms. Roddy. I'm going to bring this to an end. We talked about this at our workshop. We need small-area plans. What fits Fort Mill, Tegu Cave, Lake Wylee does not fit rural parts of Western York County. Everybody who attended our workshop on this council agreed with that.
I did that.
Yep. We're still trying to put a big old blanket over the entire county. I can understand the reluctance of some not to pass this. Ironically, I look at my map, there are three major collector roads in District 1, three. Two of them sit inside Tegu Cave. One of them is out in the county. I have one road, and I can promise you, I've seen the way that road is developing. It is not going to one-off houses. It is going to, it is going to be a massive neighborhood at some points, and if someone can get the zoning correct. So it, we have to think about that, but that, there is a amendment to deny. All those.
Would you clarify that exact wording of that amended motion?
The amendment motion is to deny, is to amend the motion to a full denial.
Yes.
To just totally deny any change.
It would end this.
It would end this.
End this ordinance. We'd start from zero. All those in favor of amending to deny, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
The amendment fails. We are back to the original motion to defer.
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Love.
Give it a shot.
I'd like to make a motion that we compromise at 165 feet with a larger setback, incorporate the setback in this of, I'm not sure of what Andy Smith recommended, but maybe it was 70, was it 75 feet, Andy? Tim, was it 75 feet? Okay, so my motion is to compromise at 165 feet with a 75-foot setback added to this ordinance change.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
There is a second. Ms. Love.
Well, I think we're just going to keep coming back and hitting this ball over and over and striking out. So 165 feet is, I think that's a good compromise. It's actually a 60-40 compromise, not 50-50. And I think if a 75-foot setback, I think part of the issue is, you know, how close some of these roads, some of these homes are being built to the road. And I know on Neely Store Road, that was a kind of a factor. And so I would be willing to compromise that because I feel like, quite frankly, it's better than not being able to do anything the next time this comes up.
Mr. Roddy.
If we approve this today, we still have to have another reading, correct?
No, this is the third and final reading.
Okay, all right, well, I'm fine.
All right. Dr. Blackwell.
I appreciate Ms. Love reaching out to compromise a little bit, but I'm sticking to my 150, so I'd vote no on this one.
Ms. Cox.
I don't think that's a problem to end up there. I think it's in a proper motion of point of order. We don't have the setback in front of us. I will tell you that I think it's appropriate because the developers have come to me and said 150 feet. I don't have a problem with 165, but I don't think we can vote on this amendment right now, today. But if it ended up being 150, 165 with a 75-foot setback, that makes sense to me. That's something I think that I have heard from developers and builders who have said that that's not an issue. And so I would, I would like for y'all, you all that are here to come and communicate with us and with staff as to whether or not you think that's a good ending result, but I can't vote for this amendment because it's not properly before us.
I agree with Ms. Cox. I do believe the motion to have a 75 setback is out of order as it is not reflected in the actual ordinance. And it's, certainly no one would have had any notice that we were even going to debate setbacks under this ordinance. So I'm going to rule the motion out of order at this time. Are there any other amendments? Is there anyone who wants to talk on the original motion to defer?
I'm just joking.
All right, I, I'm going to, I'm going to say one thing and then we're all going to vote. We enacted pending ordinance doctrine forever ago. A, we, if we can't make a decision in two weeks, we owe it to the people who do this for a living to come back in here and say that we're at least going to strip out the pending ordinance doctrine. We can defer the main motion, but we can strip out the. We can't allow this to go on more than two weeks from now. So either this council needs to be ready to vote in two weeks and pass something, or we need to let people get back to their lives while we're trying to figure out this. All those in favor of the motion to defer, say aye. We're going to, we're, but, Mr. Roddy, all those in motion to defer the deferral, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, this has been deferred two weeks. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider amending and giving second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, to amend Chapter 152 Stormwater Management and Sediment Control in order to protect, maintain, and enhance the environment of York County and the short-term and long-term public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of York County by establishing requirements and procedures to control the potential adverse effects of increased stormwater runoff associated with both future development and existing developed land to comply with the federal and corresponding state stormwater discharge regulations developed pursuant to the Clean Water Act and to ensure that York County has the authority to take any action required by it to obtain and comply with its NPDES permit for stormwater discharges. To approve the York County Stormwater Management Design Manual related to the implementation of the requirements of Chapter 152 to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Name and address, thank you.
Scott Childers, 1349 Filbert Highway in York. I really don't want to speak against, but I'm definitely not in favor right now, so I want to make sure I'm clear on that. First of all, this is, I guess, the first hearing, or the first reading for this was when, was my first question. Does anybody know the answer to that question? You don't have to answer it now, but it's something I was trying to figure out and really couldn't figure it out. So as y'all know, most of you were on council previously. When I was in support of this ordinance, I was one of the engineers that came and said, we need this ordinance. We're going to have an issue with having the ordinance. Do have, one, a problem with timing. Ms. Love talked about the lot, so I don't want to compare this to the lot thing of us not having time. I want to take that off the table. But first time I saw this was Thursday. Called many of the engineers in the, in York County, most, well, all the engineers I called in York County for this ordinance live in York County, so they're also residents. I'm just going to go over a few things I have issue with, and then there's more than that because I have two documents that are highlighted. Probably every page has something highlighted that I have questions on. We would like an opportunity as the engineering and citizens to actually be able to go through this with staff prior to you approving this at second reading. I would like to see it postponed at least to next meeting, so we have an opportunity to actually go through this. We got the 20-acre disturbed rule. North Carolina's been doing it for years. We know that that's worked in some cases, not worked in some cases. I think there's some things we could add to this ordinance that would probably help the situation, help everybody on council as far as, you know, where that heads. As far as the document itself, there's a few places that say may. You know, the development world does not like mayes. You may be able to do this, or you may be able to do that. Not really fond of that personally either. As built on private storm systems, that's kind of been an issue in other municipalities as well. If you require certain things on private systems, somebody owns that system. They're responsible for it. There's part of the county getting involved in that of what are they looking for there? If it's private property, their system, yes, they have to maintain it. But as long as they maintain it before it gets off-site, nothing goes off-site more than it should, no erosion issues. I think there may be some things there probably need to be worked on from a wording standpoint. Downstream analysis of stormwater. There's parts in here and I can't regurgitate it because it was a lot of information, obviously, but, you know, doing a stormwater study on your entire parcel and the adjacent parcel if you own it, well, that's great if you've got two acres and adjacent parcel is two acres, but if you own 1,000 acres and you've got five parcels on 1,000 acres, are you really going to be required to do a stormwater study on 1,000 acres? I'm not stating that's what this states. That's what I think when I read it. Stormwater fees. There's a lot of mention of fees in here, resource. Stormwater fees, there's, there's a lot of mention of fees in here, Resource Remediation Fund. I have no idea from reading these documents what that means, not stating it's not there. But when there's fees that I don't know what they are, it seems like a tax. Now, me as a citizen of York County, a tax that I don't know what the answer is and what the amount is, I have issue with that. Who's gonna go through the surety bonds? Who's gonna go through the credits, uh, and letters of credit with the county? Is that a new staff position? Are we gonna hire multi-staff positions for that? I think that's a monetary item from the county's standpoint. Don't really know how that's gonna work with the ordinance either. Um, and then also with the fee, who decides the fee? The way it seems here, council does not decide that fee. Now, y'all may come back and say, "Yes, council decides that fee," but that's not the way I read it. And if council's not deciding the fee, and no offense to staff, but if staff's deciding a fee and it's arbitrary, I don't really like that either because they could just make up whatever fee they want to. I'm not saying they would, but if it's not in writing, then that's what I take from it. Uh, there's also some other things, you know, with the way the permits are. Um, I can go, I could go through this entire thing, and I'm not gonna bore everybody here because y'all just had a long discussion. Um, but some of the, you know, some of the stormwater fees in general, just, I know we have them, but some of them are still unanswered in this document. We have, uh, the, the non-refundable resource remediation fee that I just talked about. What does that go for? Explains a little bit of it. Is it put in a fund somewhere? Who's in charge of that? Um, on that same page in 152045, it says may, uh, in, in Section A. We also show that the estimated cost of expenses and the performance guarantees are two-hundred percent. I do a lot of work in a lot of places, and two-hundred percent is, I mean, we all know math, right? Two-hundred percent is a lot to put up for somebody who's trying to get a project started or complete a project. I think that's a little bit excess. Again, I could go through this document. I could go through both of them. Um, but I'm asking personally, uh, for postponement of this so that some of us can get with staff. If there were meetings, if there were emails, I know when Audra was here, I discussed a lot of this with her. I discussed a lot with staff. I know we've had some staff changes. I'm not the only one that thinks this in the engineering community, but I would ask that you postpone this at least till next month. Not to kill it, I, I don't, it's not the lot thing. We're not trying to kill it. Robert said, you know, kill the lot thing. That's not what I'm talking about. I don't think there's any engineer in this room, at least that I think, um, my opinion, that's gonna say, "Kill this ordinance," because we do think it's a good thing from those that I've spoken with now. There may be, there's obviously engineers I haven't spoken with. But I really would request that we postpone this and not have the approval of second hearing so we can have public comment after we've had at least the opportunity to go through this.
Anyone else against?
Topic near and dear to my heart. So I'm Bo Ziegler. Um, I represent the Home Builders Association, and I do live in York County at 1398 Saddle Drive. Um, and I wanted to, um, I don't know that I'm necessarily against this yet, except I don't know how you get your hands completely around it yet. Um, I'm only impressed that we just got thirty-nine more pages this past week. I haven't, really, I haven't seen those yet. I haven't gotten a chance to open those. But there's a whole lot that's in this, uh, just like the gentleman just spoke about, that really, there's, there's no clarification for it yet. Um, we've got a, an ordinance in place currently, or the way that the stormwater works for us is truly a beautiful thing. Um, it's very mysterious. Um, and, and most people, I, I would doubt that, that most of you realize what happens to get a stormwater permit for a single-family house. So I'm gonna let you know what happens currently. So to get a single-family stormwater permit, first of all, you gotta find out if you need one. And I don't know where that comes from. I can tell you, let's say if you're building on a lot in the neighborhood of Seven Oaks, uh, that is, um, well, that happens to be in Rock Hill, but it could be in the county. We'll call it a, a county lot. Um, that would be a nine-thousand-square-foot lot. A nine-thousand-square-feet is maybe, maybe five of these rooms stuck all together. And we'll take one of those rooms, we stick a house on it, nine-thousand-square-feet. To get a stormwater permit for that lot, first of all, you have an engineer draw it. You have an engineer draw it because we no longer know that water goes downhill on nine-thousand-square-feet. So, um, we can't draw, um, uh, that. It has to be drawn by an engineer and then stamped by the engineer. Now, it's not enough to have a drawing showing that you're gonna put a house on nine-thousand-square-feet. It comes with another about seventy pages of support material. I don't know if you guys realize that. Seventy pages of support material to get a stormwater permit, all by the engineer so that you can put a house on nine-thousand-square-feet. Okay? So we do that. Our engineer then charges us to get that done, and we submit that to the county. So we have an engineer who has stamped it, who is, who is insured for generally, usually millions of dollars, a couple, two, three million dollars. And then we take that engineered and stamped plan, and we submit it to the county, to their engineering department, where, where they may or may not see an engineer. Um, but maybe they don't like my engineer because, you know, I mean, my guy went to Clemson. So maybe that's a problem. So it goes to the county, and the county can make adjustments or decide if on that nine, nine-thousand-square-feet, um, if we need to change the plan. Then it can go back to my engineer, and it can bounce back and forth. Or the county can say, "That's okay, we're gonna approve this, we're gonna move it along." So you're gonna start the house, right? No. Then it's gonna go to the state. So then we take that plan, we send it to the state where it sits for approximately ten days until somebody takes a look at it, where we get to their engineering department. Now, who knows? Maybe they know that my guy went to Clemson. Maybe if my guy went to state, that we'd be in a little better, better shape. Maybe, you know, if he went to South Carolina, um, it would be a shoe-in. I don't know. But then it goes to, to the state of South Carolina, it sits there for ten days until they decide what they're gonna do with it. At that point, then they will move it along again. So we've now been through three different engineering systems to decide, um, if water goes downhill on a nine-thousand-square-foot lot. Okay? Now, we'll take another house that we'll build. This one could be on Lake Wiley. It could be on five acres of land. It can be on a twenty percent grade going to the water as fast as you can get mud downhill, and it does not need a stormwater permit. Why? Why? And the thing is, is, and sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. How do I know if it does or doesn't? I, I call up Christine. Say, "Hey Christine, it's Bo. Um, I got a lot we're gonna build on it. Do I need a stormwater permit?" And we find out, do we need a stormwater permit? And we go through this arbitrary process. So I think it would be great to clean that up so that we know, hey, look, we either need a stormwater permit or we don't need a stormwater permit. Then I think, um, it would be really nice if we had some, something that would make sense in the process that is not six weeks long or eight weeks long. Um, and if you're looking at a very simple project, it ought to be very simple to get it done. If you're looking at a complex project, it should be complex. Um, they shouldn't, it's, it, it shouldn't be cookie cutter where you need to go through three different engineering systems, um, six weeks at a time, you know, you have three different government bodies. By the way, when you finish at the state, you're still not done. Then you come back to the county again, once the state has approved it, to get a final approval from the county, and then you can start your house, right? No. No, you can't. You still can't start your project. Then you have a stormwater meeting on site, um, to, to, uh, a, a pre-construction stormwater meeting. I invite you to attend one of those with me. They are fantastic. I'm gonna show you what we do, okay? We get our eighty pages. We're talking about a single-family home lot. And me and the inspector, we'll go over, well, first of all, the inspector wants to know why my grading contractor isn't there. And they wanna know why the homeowner isn't there, and they would like to know why, I don't know, the next seven or eight people in line aren't there. They're not there really because they're not necessary and because w- water only goes downhill so quickly on a nine-thousand-square-foot lot. But I'm there. So what we do is we walk over here, and we dam a little. We walk over here, and we haul a little. And then we say, "Well, where's the steel fence gonna go?" "Well, the water goes downhill, so we're gonna put the steel fence right there." "Oh, yeah, it says it right here on the plan." Good. Good, okay. Whew, glad we got that done. Now, where's the concrete cleanout gonna go? "Well, it says on the plan it's gonna go right here. That's right here." "Oh, okay, so you're gonna put it right there?" "I think we're gonna put it right there." Okay? And we spend some really good valuable time of your county employee and of the builder, and we do exactly that. I'm telling you, come join us for one. Okay? When that is done, then we can put our first pieces in place and then have them re-inspected. We still haven't cleared a lot. Can't clear the lot yet. And that's how we start to get this in motion. So I would say, is there a possibility to get this in someplace where it makes sense? Um, going forward, if we have a complicated project, make it complicated. If we have a simple project, simplify it. That's something that I would ask of you. We do really, really silly things in some of these things. Uh, concrete cleanout, okay? So I don't know if you know what a concrete cleanout is. Typical concrete cleanout for, for where you're gonna build a house is ten bales of pine straw, or ten, ten bales of straw. You put it in a square, and you put, uh, six mil plastic inside of it. And then when you pour footings or any concrete, you clean out the last, you know, three buckets of concrete into that concrete cleanout. Follow me here, okay? I'm gonna dig a footing. Let's say it's a big house. Well, let's say it's an average house. It's gonna be, let's say it's three thousand feet on the ground. I'm gonna use forty-five, fifty yards of concrete. We're gonna dig footings. Where are we gonna put the concrete? We're gonna put it in the ground. Shocking. Shocking. Forty-five or fifty yards of concrete all around where the house is gonna go, we're gonna put it in the ground. Okay? The last two buckets of concrete is gonna destroy the world, so it has to go in this concrete cleanout. Has to. Otherwise, we can be fined. We do things like that that we try to make sense out of. Then we go and we do something really crazy. We put a garage on the house. And we put concrete into the garage for the slab. The concrete actually goes on the ground. And then we do the same thing with the last two buckets of concrete. And then we'll do it again when we pour the driveway. We have a lot of nonsense that are, that are, that are in these seventy pages that we use, um, and we have some things that make sense. It would be lovely if we were really going to attack this and get rid of the baloney and make something that actually works. So, but not knowing what the cost is, not knowing what the fines are, not knowing really how it's gonna be enforced really does make all of us nervous. There's no doubt about it. I would, the last thing that I wanted to say is that, um, you, you've already voted on this matter, um, but as far as, um, having a, a pending ordinance uh, where you're enforcing a pending ordinance, that truly is, is, is absolutely, it's terrible. You, you really have put some people, um, uh, in a financial position that they should never have been put in. And I can tell you, currently, I don't know a single soul, and, and, and it does not include me, but they're out there. They're out there. That is bad government. You should never, ever, ever enforce an ordinance that's not an ordinance. So, that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Anyone else against? Anyone for? Anyone in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Staff, Don Clark, uh, 3878 Concord Road in York. Recent years, we've experienced, uh, repeated runoff issues from seemingly minor to, uh, extremely serious, into our streams, into the lake, into the river below the dam. How many of these events might have been avoided or minimized if the provisions that have been proposed had been put in place, um, a year ago, two years ago, three years ago? Current county statutes have proven insufficient to protect the streams, the lake, and the river below the dam. I know you understand that the resulting damage and degradation of the lake and the river is most likely impossible to repair. And, um, it's nearly impossible to get dredging permits. Um, it takes a long time to do that. So most of this damage that has occurred goes unremediated, and it's permanent. It's equally impossible to truly estimate the costs, so it's very difficult to set up a fine structure that is anywhere near sufficient. But if you increase the fines, if you have bonding requirements, if you have stop-work orders, you'll get people's attention. When most of the major environmental laws were passed in the, in the seventies, I'm talking about the Clean Air Act, Clean Water Act, toxic substances, safe drinking water. I was working in Washington as a lobbyist for the chemical industry who opposed everything that came across, uh, the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee. And I would spend hours with these people saying, "You can't ignore these problems. And if you defer them, it'll be back in the next session of Congress. And if you think you don't like the regulations now, you're really not gonna like them two years from now." In one instance, uh, they didn't encourage me. They said, "If you can kill the super fund bill on its first go-around, go ahead and do it." I said, "You really shouldn't do that." But we did. It came back two years later. It was ten times as large as the legislation that was originally proposed. And it's grown since then, but the problems have grown since then. So all I'm saying is, delay exposes us to additional problems. It doesn't take anyone to realize that certainly the weather patterns of the last six to eight months have put us at a tremendous amount of risk. It seems to rain all the time, and it rains harder than when perhaps we haven't seen it rain. So, you know, we can delay on all of these things that come before the council. But at some point, you have to put a stake in the ground, and if, uh, if there's issues with the regulations or with the ordinance as it's implemented, then you can make changes along the way. But I encourage you to keep moving forward, because every, every time we delay, every time we step back, we expose ourselves to yet another environmental insult. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor?
My name's Billy Hagner. I live at nineteen oh-one Voyager Road in York. I've been, uh, for several years now, I've been very concerned about the, uh, sediment runoff from the various developments under, under construction in the county, primarily in the Lake Wiley area and, uh, primarily in, uh, areas that are in close proximity to the lake. On several occasions, I have, uh, publicly expressed my concern about this over the past years to y'all. And, uh, I have even brought some pictures up here, which I just happened to look, I still have them on my phone, pictures that show sediment going directly into the lake. Matter of fact, in, on September of 2015, David McCorkle and I made a presentation to most of y'all on the, what we call, presented was the Lake Wiley Critical Watershed Proposal. If y'all remember that or not, but anyway, it was, uh, it was, I thought it was possibly received. And the planning department stated, uh, looked at it and said they thought they could come back within a, probably a year with something to propose for y'all to vote on. And here we are now, close to four years since we made that presentation in 2015. So what was previously said, you know, this is not something we need to postpone, it's something we need to keep working on. There has been several things brought up, you know, there's probably things that need to be changed in what's there being proposed right now, but it's not something we can just keep putting off like we've been doing. So I did review, it's, it looked like it's a, I did look at the existing, uh, ordinance and the new one, and it looked like they pretty well started over- the new one, and it looked like they pretty well started over completely with the, with the new one. So it was pretty hard to kinda compare from one to the other. But it looked like it was very, very inclusive. So in summary, I do support what's being proposed with, you know, some possible changes being needed to be made to it. I did notice a couple of things myself. And one was, I think recently, just brought up for exceptions for individuals building residential homes on, with 5,000 square feet or less. I think, personally, I think that's too small of a number. If I'm just an individual trying to build a house on my lot, you know, a 20, a 2,500 square foot house, and then you put a garage with it, and what you need to do to clear out for that, you just, 5,000 square feet is, in my opinion, would not, is not enough. So I think you need to look at that. Another one is the 20-acre, you do have a provision in there, if you have over 20 acres that you're going to, to develop, then you do have to, you are allowed, possibly allowed some additional measures in order to, to clear more than this 20 acres. In my opinion, you need to put some type of a cap on that, that it, that it can't go above a certain amount, and primarily in the, in the Lake Wiley area. It does have, um, does have provisions for, for more severe penalties of violations, which will make, and for, will make everyone give it a much higher priority, which I think we definitely do need. This ordinance is very lengthy and detailed. It requires more inspectors by both the operators of the developments and the, of the county. And for this to work, the county is gonna have to be sure it does have the resources in place, not only to administer it, but to also go out and make inspections and enforce it. Because if you don't make, go out and make inspections, we'll have like rains like we had this weekend. If somebody doesn't go out and see what's really happening, then you don't know if it's working or not. It does allow for subdivisions to have an active approved land dispersant permit remaining under the present requirement. So if I've got a permit that's already been approved, it says that I can, I don't have to go into these new rules, which stands to reason to me. I guess my question would be, going forward, are we gonna have a, people now knowing that there's maybe something coming? Are you gonna keep people from trying to rush ahead and get a permit way in advance so they don't have to go under these, these new regulations? I think we need to look at, how, how do you handle that? So in summary, I hope you will, y'all will approve this at the first reading, and then we will have some type of a speedy approval process coming down the road. Because we can't, like I said, it's been four, over four years now, and we don't need to be continuing to postpone this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor?
My name is Margaret Blackwell. I live, I live at 5430 Baker Lane in Lake Wiley. I find it rather interesting that when you call people up here to talk against us, it's all the developers, and they're all asking you to delay. I have been talking to you since 2014, one year longer than Mr. Hagner says he has, about the fact that something needs to be done to protect the lake, and it's totally been ignored. Since I have been, in, in the area where I live, coves have filled in as much as five feet because of development that's going on. I have a cove on the east side of my house that never had mud in it until a company was allowed to clear the majority of 87 acres. They clearcut it, and since then, it has been filling in with red mud. On this phone, I have many pictures of the mud going right into the lake. I have called this county sometimes on a weekly basis, sometimes even a daily basis, to get somebody out there to stop that. When you go out to look at a developer, they're given five days or so many days to remediate the problem. We need to stop that. They need to be fined significantly on day one. Just a rough estimate, the company behind me, who's developing behind me, is gonna make $57 million, $750, and that's a conservative estimate on the houses that they're selling. A $1,000 fine is not sufficient at all. You need to make it enough so that they know they need to stop this. I do agree with Ms., I do disagree with Mr. Hagner on one thing. He says 20 acres is not enough to be cleared at a time. I think that's ample to be cleared at a time. You need to start these fines on day one, and then the inspectors from the county need to get serious. They need to realize what's going on out there and do something from day one, rather than being afraid to talk to a developer and to fine a developer or hold them responsible. And that has been a problem. I appreciate very much you listening to my remarks. I hope you will pass this tonight, and let's move on and get something done.
Anyone else speak in favor? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a new motion.
Motion to approve, second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There's a second. Ms. Love.
So, a lot of your timelines go back a lot farther than mine do, but I can tell you that in April of 2017, Chairman Johnson and I sat down with county management and planning, planning and zoning director. So when I talk about things taking a long time and nothing happening, here we are again. And, you know, we've been working on this, we've been working on this for so long, and we had, we had a public hearing. You know, you, you gotta pay attention. You can't show up at the last minute and be like, "Wait a minute, we got one more thing we wanna talk about, because this council's moving on." We've got to put these things into effect. The people in the county are counting on us. We are the elected officials who represent the majority of people in this county. And the majority of people in this county are concerned about what's running off into the lake. I will tell you that yesterday, and yes, I did pick a really rainy day to go out, Saturday and yesterday. But I get a lot of complaints when there's a lot of rain, and I kinda think, you know, it's because there is a lot of rain. And, and so those complaints, I, I want an average complaint. I wanna get a complaint on a day when it's just an average rain. And, and we have fewer and fewer average rains. There are a lot, lot more rains, a lot heavier rains now than, than what we're used to getting. But I drove through the two sites adjacent to me, and you talk about 20 acres, being able to clear 20 acres, let's talk about a whole lot more than 20 acres. And currently, there is no silt fence on the majority of that. Because unless they're working right there on that, they don't even have to put up a silt fence. How long are we gonna allow these things to happen? And any hesitation tonight, everybody up here should have been like, "Second," as soon as I said this. And it concerns me, it concerns me that we aren't getting things done on behalf of the people who have elected us to look out for them. You know what? And people are gonna come up, and they're gonna have issues, and they're gonna have one more little thing that they wanna add to every single thing that we do. And it's delaying the things that need to be done. It's very important that we pass this second reading. If you've got an issue with this stormwater ordinance, and you feel like you, now, after we've had discussions and workshops, you feel like now you've got something to say, I encourage you to call David Hudson and, and, and let him know. Because I'm planning to make the motion to approve this on third reading. I'm tired of waiting. The people I represent are tired of waiting. The people in your other districts are tired of waiting. It's got to be done. I ca, I cannot even stress this. This is the most frustrating job I think I've ever had, because I can't get anything done. Things that are so critical to York County aren't getting done. And, and if you don't think this is a problem, I'm happy to, to pay for the gas, to drive you around, to show you just how bad this is. And you know what? It's not really, it's not, maybe it's not so bad out on a flat property out in Western York County, or over on the other side of Clover, or over in Rock Hill. But this is critical. And I'm asking everybody here to think about the shores of Lake Wiley and how critical it is to that shoreline. You might live outside a pasture, and it might not be as big a deal. It's a big deal around our, like, the shorelines of Lake Wiley.
Yeah. Dr. Blackwell?
And I agree with the points, some of the points Ms. Love made about how long things take. In fact, I think the other councilman before you was, was part of the decision for us to have that watershed district, which the council approved, watershed district around the lake. And I kept asking months later, if council members remember what happened to it, and I don't think I ever really got a clear answer on that, but somehow, the stormwater thing that we're looking at now kinda grew out of that. And certainly, I agree, something needs to be done. We all want to protect the lake, everybody's for that. But when we get this last Wednesday or whenever, the ordinance was 39 pages. The design manual was about 97 pages. And per the point that we've waited all this time, and then in several days, we're supposed to digest all this, was a little bit troubling to me. But when I looked, and plus the fact, I've not talked to any expert engineers, whatever, that could provide some guidance, like the one gentleman that talked about some of the issues he deals with. I've not heard of any engineer expert assisting planning department yet. There may have been, I don't know, but that seems to be lacking a little bit. When I look at things in there that says "may" and "fees may," and this and that, I got nervous about that. It's not really concrete. And when I see a stormwater board's gonna be formed, five people, and if I understood it correctly when I read through the ordinance, they can make a decision, but the stormwater administrator can still ignore it, I thought, well, why do we have a board then? If that's an appeals process, and the board can be ignored of the five citizens. So I think the point I'm making is, there's a lot of, certainly, I agree, but if we've waited this long, and I was disturbed by the watershed district, which seemed to be the obvious protection for the lake that could have been immediate, and that somehow just vanished, you know, I wanna make sure that this gets fine-tuned a little bit, and things like a board that has no ability to make a decision, really, unless I misread it. I just think there's some things in this that really need to be fine-tuned some. So it's second reading, I get it. But I would ask that if we got a third reading, it has a month or so of fine-tuning and cleaning up and improvement. If we're gonna do this, just let's do it right.
Mr. Winkler?
I have a, a lot of concerns, and, and we did get this earlier in the week, and unfortunately, I guess, when I went to Georgia Tech, I decided to change my major from engineering to management, because I tried reading some of this stuff, and there's a lot of terms about hydrologic criteria. You know, just, just looking at it, I, I am, I agree that something needs to be done. We've gotta protect our waterways, and it mentions a lot of that in there. You know, I, I've said for years now, I don't understand why somebody in my district who's doing two half-acre lots side by side has to put silt fence around every square foot of their lot, but somebody in Allison's district can clear 20 acres and put a silt fence around the 20 acres and say they're through with silt fence, when everybody knows one silt fence won't handle 20 acres worth of runoff, and we've gotta put it on every single side of a lot in my district for somebody that's just doing two houses side by side. Nobody's ever been able to explain to me why that is and how that makes sense, that I could understand it. Maybe that's my Georgia education system that's the problem, I don't know. But it just doesn't make sense the way some of these things read and the way we do some of this. And so, I would like to ask, if this goes through on second reading tonight, that third reading be 30 days out if we could, because I want to ask staff and some of these engineers that have some issues with it to please contact me, and let's schedule some time to sit down and talk so I can understand this a little bit better.
Mr. Winkler, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Do you accept their motion to pass second reading, but to then have third reading in 30 days?
I think that's fine, but I do wanna remind, we did have a workshop on this.
I, I agree. I forget who, who was the second, I think Joel, you were the second on this. Do you, alright. So that, the motion now is to approve, but third reading shall not be for at least 30 days.
Alright. And, you know, I just, again, it's not my background, I don't understand it, but just a, a quick example, responsible party shall inspect the stormwater management facilities and/or BMPs at frequencies listed in the maintenance agreement, SWPPP, or the stormwater management design manual, whichever applies, and perform any necessary maintenance, including routine and non-routine activities. How many people understood what I just read?
Well, the guy back there on the back row.
Yeah.
Works in the county, is the, is the guy who's gonna be doing that, he understands it.
And so, you know, I, I, it may be right, it may not, I don't know. But I, I need some better understanding of it between now and then, and I'm just asking for 30 days.
Frankly, I'm fine with that. I think that's a fair compromise, and I agree, it's, you know, getting that number of pages on a, on a Thursday before a meeting, it's almost like, you know, with Obamacare, when they said, "Well, we have to pass it so we can read it." Obviously, something needs to be done, there's problems around the lake, but I do wanna make sure we're understanding and not getting ahead of ourselves and passing something for the sake of it until we really understand it.
Ms. Cox?
I had a constituent call me this weekend who lives on Bookout Road, and she couldn't make it to her house, had to leave her truck, she's an older female, had to leave her truck at a next-door neighbor's house because she couldn't get to her house because there was a problem with a county-maintained culvert. We're working through the issues with that, but that's a problem when somebody can't get home because there's an issue with where we are. And so, we gotta do something, and it's not just Lake Wiley. I, I am concerned that what we need to do to protect the lake is different than what needs to happen on the other side of the district. So I asked a friend of mine who's an engineer, and someone, and another person who is in this particular field, who deals with this on a municipal level, to take a look at it. And I have some edits from them that I'm gonna share with staff, and I think 30 days is, is an appropriate time. And Scott, I mean, I, I assume that that's enough time for you guys to put some written comments to, to the council and to staff, and I certainly would like to be copied on, on what you find, and if, if you determine that that is not enough time to actually do a thorough review, I'd like to know that, but I do think this is a fair compromise. I think that this is something that affects all of us. One of the biggest concerns I had was us potentially, the county potentially in these documents, creating an opening for the county to take over private BMPs that are supposed to be maintained by private entities. And I'm, I can tell you right now, I'm certainly not in favor of that. I think that the private entities need to be responsible for that, and they need to make sure that they have a bond to do that. And anytime we are gonna take something like that over, I think the council needs to be doing it, not a board, because I think that could potentially get out of hand. But there, most of the things that they suggested had, were, were things that I don't think are insurmountable, but I will pass these, these recommendations and these changes along to staff, and I think they're critical to my support for final third reading. But I do think this is an opportunity for us to make sure we get this right.
I recall the meeting in April 2017, and I, as I recall, Representative Tommy Pope was there, and Representative Bruce Bryant was there, and some lakekeepers were there, and it was a fairly diverse group talking about it. And I do remember my comment to them all, which made no one happy in the room. I said, "Well," they said, "Well, we can get this done in four or five months." And I said, "You won't have anything done in four or five months." I said, "We'll be lucky if we see something in a year and a half." And most of the people in the room scoffed at me, and here we are. I, I support the, the passing of second reading. I think this is important. I do believe our engineering community, builder community, needs to engage. One of the things I'm going to say to you is, I know you may not have had lots of notice, but the way we are trying to do things is, we're trying to do things in a committee level. It will then be sent to a workshop. We have standing workshops now on the second Tuesday of every month, where nothing that comes out of committee will come straight to council. It will go through that workshop. We are not trying to hide this. We want you there, we want your input there. So then it can come forward to the full council, and we don't have this delay, 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 that we can actually move ordinances through in a timely manner. That is our hope. I hope the, I hope those of you who have an interest will take this opportunity over the next 30 days and engage. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. New business, council discussion regarding rezoning process. Don't forget about the things deferred out of, that's old, that's new business.
Okay.
Okay.
That's new business two, three, and four.
Okay.
New business, council discussion regarding rezoning process changes. Ms. Love, would you like to discuss that?
Yes. So we had a zoning committee meeting, where we discussed this with staff. Councilman Hamilton and Cox were both, well, have been part of the conversation. And I feel like we probably have kind of come to an agreement since our last workshop. We had a little bit of discussion about this at the last workshop, and what we are, and I'm speaking on behalf of y'all, but y'all can certainly, certainly, because I just, I tried to vet this a little bit ahead of time, so we could just save some time and get this right also. But what I think we've come up with is something that allows for transparency, allows for public hearing, and gets things kind of moving in the right order. And that will be to have, the staff would make a recommendation to council. The planning commission would hear from the developers, who are there for a planning commission meeting. They would be called on for the way it's set up now by the chairwoman. They would be called on to answer questions, and there would not be really a public hearing at, before the planning commission. And then, it would come to council for a first reading. We would hear staff's recommendation, we would hear the planning commission recommendation, we would have a public hearing. So basically, county council is hearing from all parties at first reading. We would also have a vote at first reading, which gives us time, ahead of time, to make any changes or adjustments or negotiations between first reading and second reading. By second reading, hopefully, we have everything all smoothed out, ready to roll into a third reading. And the thought process, one of the things that Councilman Blackwell mentioned at the, we had a workshop last week, and this was tagged on to the end of it, a little small discussion about this. One of the things that he recommended was that the developers be asked to reach out to the people. So if they're going to put in a development, we would like for them to reach out. Ms. Cox and I agree that that's probably a good idea, and just for transparency, and so that those people have a heads up on things. So, in speaking with David Hudsith earlier today, they can't really make them do that, because there's no way to make them, make that happen, but it would be suggested at the time when they come for their plan, and before they, you know, when they're scheduling their planning commission and whatever that process exactly is. But they would be asked to reach out to those neighbors. And actually, it's in their best interest to reach out to those neighbors, you know, so that, so that when we come to the public hearing, everybody's kind of in agreement, or if they're not, if they're in total disagreement, then they at least know what the other side is, and we don't have to hash all of that out here. But it kind of streamlines the process, and I feel like it's important that the elected officials are the ones who basically hear from all of the people. It's not the planning commission's job to listen to the people necessarily. They are looking at it from a different standpoint. They're looking at it from the standpoint of, is this a good plan? And maybe they can negotiate some on that plan to make it a better plan. But I don't feel like it's up to them to hear from, hear from the people. I feel like that's our, that's our job. So I think the majority of us are in agreement with that, but welcome any questions or comments, obviously.
Any other discussion or comments from anyone?
Let me.
Dr. Blackwell.
For clarifications, David, I understand the logic, you can't make them do it, but is it not, and this might be a Michael Kendry question, can it not be a policy of the council that if they don't do it, then it doesn't go any further with us until they do it? As part of the procedural process?
Have to think that through a little bit. Dr. Blackwell.
The other point would be, I just feel like, still, I mean, situations that have happened, since we changed public hearing to the first reading, I think we need to go back to the old way, have public hearing at the second reading, because a lot of times people don't hear about this until the first reading. And then it's like, oop, sorry, when they come on the second reading, sorry, too late. So I just think that's more transparent, and gives everybody a chance to, have a chance to say something, because they may not be even notice it until after it becomes an official first reading.
Mr. Winkler.
I'll try to keep it short. I'll just say that we had a, Councilmember Love and I had a little disagreement about this before, and, you know, I think, I stated at the workshop, that personally, I think the public should be able to come and speak to the planning commission and the county council if they want to speak. It's the public that, you know, that it affects with this. But I understand, I've learned since stating that, that the way the ordinance is written, at least the chair of the planning commission can decide whether or not they want to hear anybody. I'm not, you know, again, I think the public should be heard when they want to come, whether it's planning commission or a public hearing for us. I do like the hearing sooner rather than later, though, because I've heard people say, well, you know, once it gets to second reading, it's just rubber stamped anyway. And I can't remember in four years of sitting up here, you know, again, it didn't happen tonight, and I tried, when we got to a third reading and killed anything. By the time it gets to third reading, it's pretty much a done deal. And so, I think a lot of times, the public thinks, well, you know, if it's a second reading, they've already voted on it twice, or if it's a third reading, if we say we want to have the hearing later, the public feels like, well, there's no reason for me to come and speak if they've already made up their mind on it. So I think the sooner we hear from the public, the better, and the more often we can hear from them. And I'll say that as a council member, and I've heard from a bunch of you today, but that's my job, that's what I campaigned for when I did this. So I like it earlier rather than later. And personally, I'd rather see them be able to speak to both planning and council, but, you know, so for now, like I said, I support an idea of keeping it at first reading.
Ms. Cox.
We changed the system in order to make sure that the public was heard before there was a staff recommendation. That's why we did it. That's why I thought it was a good idea. I don't have a problem, since staff has now come back and says, look, this is not working efficiently, and the public doesn't have enough information to give public hearing at the appropriate time for us to change it back. And I'm, I think that what Allison proposed is to have first reading at, public hearing at first reading. I think no matter what we do, it needs to be consistent. We don't need to be bouncing around. One council member shouldn't have first reading on second and third, which has kind of been a problem here, but I think we need to be consistent. So first reading it, there will be the public hearing. Then after that, anyone who wants to speak, you still can come, and you still can speak under the two minute rule, which is, which is still there. One of the, one of the conditions of why I'm willing to change it to that, though, is because of what I think Dr. Blackwell made a good, and I give him all credit for this, I think he made a good point. I think he think, he put the onus not on our staff, but on the applicant, to reach out to the individuals who are entitled to get noticed. So I don't, I think that it's, it certainly is appropriate, and if somebody comes before me, and it's a contentious issue that they haven't done that, that's going to weigh on my mind as to why they didn't reach out to the public. But I think staff should give them a list of all of the people and their addresses of folks who are entitled to notice under the ordinance. I think the applicant should reach out to the, to the public before the public, before the planning commission. And I think that they should have a meeting beforehand and start the dialogue, because that's really what the issue is. We're trying to put people together, we're not trying to stop development, and we're not, and we're not trying, what we're trying to do is to pull people together, and let's come up with a compromise, and something that folks can live with, and that makes sense with our comp plan, so.
Didn't we have something, maybe a couple of years ago, that we increased the area of notification when, you know, developers or any activities going on? Do we have any, I know there was some concern about whether the developer or builder would notify the right number of people or the right people. Do they have to sign some kind of affidavit saying, we mailed 60 letters to the surrounding, whatever? Because if it's going to be just all on them, it's basically the honor system. And I would hate for someone to come up and say, hey, I didn't get notified, y'all shouldn't pass this, and I just heard Chrissy say, you know, if someone comes up and say they weren't notified, it may weigh in on, you know, how she votes on a particular issue. So do we have anything in place that, that, that builder or developer agrees or signs saying, hey, I mailed, I notified, you know, I'm agreeing to whatever stipulations if I didn't? You know, what do we have in place as a checks and balance, if we're going to put all this on the builder or developer to be the ones responsible for notification?
Bump, I don't want to interrupt you, but my understanding is that right now, we have staff that does the actual notice to the public, and they charge that, I guess, to the developer applicant. But, and that's separate and apart from what Dr. Blackwell has requested, is that this would be an independent, you're responsible for doing this.
So is staff still going to do the notification?
Right.
Okay, okay, I thought it was saying, put all this on the developer.
That's right.
To notify. So, okay.
And for that point, too, whether it's staff or developer, there's always going to be somebody that says they never.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that we're going to do public hearing at the first reading. Now what do we do for that same individual that says, I didn't get, I wasn't aware and missed a time to speak for or against at the public hearing? You know, the only time they could be able to speak going forward. Because typically, people hear, people in surrounding areas hear about something after it's gotten passed, or the conversation ensues, whether they see it in a newspaper report, or C N two, or some news clipping, or some water cooler talk, hey, this is going on in your area, and you're like, oh, county council's talking about this. Well, they have a public hearing coming up in two weeks or in a week. It's not so much that people are missing the boat on the first reading, it's, I think they get notified. Once we start having conversations up here, and if it's big enough, if it's a big enough project, it's reported on, or some signs going up, or they ride by and see the rezoning, or whatever's going on. I think if we drop everything on the first reading, a lot of people are going to miss that opportunity, and we're going to see more people coming to do the two minutes versus coming to speak during the natural public hearing. So either way, we're going to miss someone, people are going to get left out, but I think if you put, put it too far up front, we're still going to hear from people, it'll be just now, do we really listen to those two minute speeches about agenda item number 15 that's coming up later? Or do we really listen to those people when they're speaking at a public hearing, and we're about to take action on something right then? I think some of that will, some of that communication will get lost if we separate, separate a lot of it. I like hearing from people right before we're about to take action, because the points they're making are heartfelt, right on my mind, and it's not, they're speaking now, and we're voting later. Because we're going to see people come up and exercise that two minute situation, because they didn't really know what was going on, because the opportunity was at first reading, and it's not a lot of publication. I don't know what the great extent that staff does to notify people, because let's face it, if you get something in the mail from the county, if it's not a bill for taxes, you throw it over to the side, and you get into the bill, seeing how you're going to do, cooking dinner, whatever you've got going on. And I think, and that's just typical how we are. I'm not, I'm not picking on anyone, unless we going to buy putting yellow notices on people's door, red notices, you got a public hearing, you about to come speak up now, because it's that first reading. We're still going to miss people, regardless of how we do it.
Can I add one pump, one pump to bump, one point to Bump's comment? We tried the first reading public hearing, and, you know, that's what we shifted to, that's been the problem. That's when I've gotten all the feedback about, well, hey, I didn't know, and for Bump's point, when the media throws it out there, it's first reading, it becomes official notice in ways staff, developer, nobody else can do better. So when we have it at second reading, we've not, we've only had one vote. We've not had two votes. We have the public hearing before we vote. So if you just had one discussion and vote on it, and I, I just want to give people the chance, because there's so many times the past seven months, I had a lot going on in my district, oddly for a change, and that seemed to be the biggest issue that, I'm sorry, you can't speak now. Well, you can sign up for two minutes, but, you know, I would just prefer to defer to the potential of people having a greater chance to speak, because after that first reading, that notice really flies out.
Right, right.
I think we've got some consensus, maybe, kind of.
What would that mean?
I will say this, it sounds to me like this needs to be drafted into some form of a policy, and allow the council to actually debate it and vote on it, because we do seem to be everywhere a little bit on this. I did not originally support having public hearing at first reading. However, if we are going to require that the developers send an additional letter to put people on notice, then I would have, that means the county's put, we put a sign up, the county sent you a letter, and the developers sent you a letter. If we're going to require that, at a certain point, I don't know how much more notice we can give you in the public. You can sign up on our website to get a text or an email about rezonings. I publish every rezoning in District One every month in my newsletter. I just don't know how, I've seen them on your Facebook site. I don't know how much more, we can only give so much information, and somebody then has to go out there and capture that information. So I, I do support it at first reading, so long as we have these hoops and kind of protections to do. But I think we need staff to put this in a more formal policy posture, so that we can debate it, and at least we'll all know what the rule is, and we'll move forward and live with it until we change our mind again. New business number two. Council to approve change order number two with Clancy and Thays Construction Company in the amount of $290,096, and additional costs associated with site-related issues encountered during phases one and two of the building and parking lot construction.
So.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
You know, I'll just say that we've had a couple of changes on this, from the way I remember it, and, you know, we did a deductive change, now we're adding a little bit back. As with most buildings, including Family Court, you know, things change, we discover things from time to time, we have to spend a little more, sometimes we save a little money. Everything is still, my understanding, under budget overall, and all the buildings we're doing. And I believe this is still, including this change order, is still a couple, just about $194,000 below the original construction bid that was awarded, so I support the change.
Dr. Blackwell.
I'm the one that pulled this out, just for the main reason that I just remembered that we had, I think, around $500,000 set aside for the problem issues that this site presented, and it was already planning ahead, so I just wanted to make sure this is not over and above that original $500,000, that it's part of that what we originally kind of set. I couldn't remember, so I just wanted to get clarification. Somebody.
Who wants to chime in on this?
Hey, I'll try, I'll give it a shot. Basically, when this thing was started, the bid, the construction bid was $20,941,515. We did some value engineering, staffing comings, and we basically reduced that amount by $483,903. Now what this has done is it's added back $290,096. So we now have, we are, as Councilman Winkler said, we are $194,193 under budget.
Well, and I get that part, I just couldn't remember. I remember because of all the problems this site would have, it was set aside like $500,000 just to be able to address those problems. So I just wanted to make sure this was in that original $500,000 set aside, or if this is additional above what we set aside.
Dr. Blackwell, it was included in the original construction estimates that we did.
So this is part of the original 500 that we set aside?
That's correct.
It's not additional to that?
Not additional.
Okay, good enough. Anyone else?
It's my understanding that the overage had a lot to do with the parking lot issue, which was something that had to be done regardless of where we located the government center. So I think that's another point that's important to be made.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, hearing none, motion passes. Council to approve acceptance of roadway maintenance of roads in the Lake Crest subdivision, Phase One, located in Council District Two in the Lake Wiley area. Is there a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Love.
So, do we have pictures, Karen? I just wanted to just give you a visual. My concern is that we are maybe halfway through on this development, but one of the roads that was
I just wanted to just give you a visual. My concern is that we are maybe halfway through on this development, but one of the roads that was mentioned is Sandbar Point. That road does not have the final pave on it, um, all the way. Also, you can see from these, these are, this is Baker Lane, one of the roads that they would like to have the county take over. And you can see the large concrete structures there, that they're gonna have to come back in and move these, and it's gonna take big equipment to do that. So, um, next, I don't know what order these pictures are in, so there's, there are the concrete pipes again. This is one of the drains, and you can see that it's actually never been right, and I just, I hate for the county to take anything on that's not right, but you can see the bag up, sitting up on the curb. That's the bag that's supposed to be down in that drain to collect the things that are going down in that drain. So, um, I, I just, I just don't feel like, um, they are prepared to turn their roads over to the county, and we are going to incur, um, a lot of damage to these roads, I feel like, you can keep going, Karen. These are the, these are between two of the roads, but at the corner of Baker Lane and Sandbar Point, these are, these are the mounds of dirt that are still there, they're gonna have to bring very large excavating equipment back in, and these are the only two roads that they can use to get there. So again, we're, we're gonna be damaging these roads, um, next picture. Again, those are the, you can see they've still got the, even the gravel and everything out there beside that.
Question.
And, is that the last picture? Okay, all right, some of my pictures didn't come through today, but, but anyway, so I just, I would like to defer the county, to defer this, um, until the subdivision is complete, and then all of the roads can be checked out, looked at, and confirmed that we are not gonna incur any cost as a county for roads that have been damaged during the ongoing construction.
Mr. Winkler?
I just had a quick question on that. I guess they're approaching our, if, phase one, so if we accept these roads on this part, when they start phase two, are they going right back through those same roads and damaging those roads during phase two? I know sometimes you enter from a different area in a different phase, but.
Well, they have two entrances, um, but all of this is in, is, all of these pictures are within phase one, so they've still got to gain access back to these areas, which I feel like they're, they're still gonna, it's basically still under construction.
Right, yeah, I'm fine with it.
Ms. Roddy?
I just have a question for staff. Do we typically take, take roads in the county inventory if the project's not complete? Even though it may be, they're saying we're gonna do a different phase, but if the same construction company's doing phase one and two, shouldn't it, isn't it in our best interest to wait till everything's completed before we take these roads? Because obviously, they're gonna have to use some, like she said, some heavy equipment to get back in, and that's gonna put a lot of stress on these roads, and if this road hasn't gotten a final paving on it, it's gonna do significant damage because it still needs another top coat of paving on it. So my question to staff is, do we typically take roads in the inventory if the project's not one-hundred percent complete?
The answer to your question, Mr. Roddy, is, in, in this case, phase one, Sandbar Court, the, uh, portion that Ms. Love is referring to, the part that hasn't received the second lift is actually in phase two. Phase one, and in all subdivisions, whenever we give it a final plat approval, they, uh, either provide a letter of credit, or in this case, a certified check. And we wait before presenting it to council for consideration of acceptance. Either you're, after a two-year period has passed, which this has, this was actually, we received the check, the plat was recorded in January of 2017. So a two-year period passes, or they have eighty percent build-out. Now, in, in this case, phase one, they've actually met both of those thresholds. That does not mean that you have to accept it at this time. You totally have the ability to defer it until you find that we're at an appropriate point of development for you to consider, uh, acceptance.
So all these pictures are phase one?
Yes.
Yes, sir, so you know, the eighty percent build-out, that if they have a hundred lots, that they've actually built eighty lots, that's one threshold, and the other one is the two-year before we can release the letter of credit, or customarily, when we would bring it before you, uh, for consideration of acceptance.
What about, and I don't wanna interrupt you, but I heard some discussion about the integrity of repairs, or something to that effect, I mean, do y'all check all?
Yes, sir, we actually went out there this past Friday, walked all the phase one. I cannot deny the fact that they have a large storm drainage structure sitting out on disturbed area, nor the fact that they have a large stockpile of dirt, which we know that they are gonna have to move. Those are considerations that we did write down, definitely good considerations for you to keep in mind, determining if you wanna make a decision tonight, or if you want to defer, and choose, choose a more appropriate time to consider this.
Well, I, I would just think if, you know, even though they've met the eighty percent, but if we as a staff know there's still significant work to be done, where they're gonna be in and out, and possibly damaging roads before we take them into inventory, because if something happens two weeks down the road, because they have to come in, excavate it, or come in, have to move, steal some existing, um, um, equipment or, or items, we don't wanna put ourselves at risk of being able to have to cover those damages because we know they're gonna have to come in and excavate the dirt, come in and move stuff. I, I think we, we probably wanna be cautious and wait before we take these in inventory because there's a high likelihood something's gonna happen to the road. So I would probably side with Allison, uh, even though they've met the eighty percent, two years, or whatever you got going on, I'd say let's, we have nothing to gain or lose, we have nothing to gain by taking them now. It's more we have something to lose if we take them now because of future or short-term damage that may happen, so I'd say hold off.
Thank you. Mr. Shanahan?
Yeah, I actually agree with Councilwoman Love. When, when this was approved, it was approved based on the fact they had done everything they were supposed to do, did not realize these other issues were out there. Uh, what I would like to do is not only defer it so we can make sure it's done right, take a look at our policy and make sure that we've got something in there to address this in the future.
Anyone else?
This is, this is not just common to this subdivision, this is actually occurs on basically every subdivision. They develop phase one, and then after it's final planted, we, which is the other two that were approved tonight, there are additional phases beyond phase one that will be accessed across phase one and/or develop phase two, phase three, phase four.
Dean, so I'm a developer, I put this bond up. I go in and I say, I get two years, or I get eighty percent completion, and all of a sudden, the county's gonna take over that road for me. What step does the county make at that two-year mark, or that eighty percent mark, to make sure those roads? Because if y'all went out there Friday and walked them, and realized that this mess was there, I'm a bit curious, do we not go out and inspect every time?
We go out and inspect every time, yes, sir.
And was that stuff out there when we inspected it?
The concrete structures are sitting on private property, in all honesty, it's, we're beyond the road right away, and they did meet the eighty percent build-out. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, we should not go back and review our policy, as Mr. Shanahan has pointed out. There's things like this that do bring up, uh, concerns that we should go back and look and verify while we're doing the things we're doing.
I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm most concerned by is the, the county knew that this was there. They knew that the dirt was there, they knew the concrete structures were there, and in bold, I read, the engineering department, the county management recommended approval of the road maintenance. And I'm not aiming this at you, I'm aiming this at Bill. Bill, I don't understand how the county approved this for us to take it in. If we knew these issues existed, I would ask that you, y'all go back and study this. This, this doesn't seem right, this seems to be a broken system.
Policy, we have a bad policy.
It's a broken policy, we have to change this policy to make it make sense. I apologize, Mr. Hamilton.
That's fine, I mean, you basically spoke many of my same concerns. I'm grateful to Councilwoman Love to, for bringing this to our attention, and some other folks that are here tonight. The time and percentages are guidelines, they come, this issue comes to council for approval, so it's not a rubber stamp process. These are obviously conditions that can impose much greater costs on the county, or even beyond having another road to maintain. Um, and I would like to echo Chairman Johnson's comments, that we need to revision, or revise this policy, or at least even see what it is, so that there are questions like this, or there are issues like this that arise when we have ongoing maintenance concerns with the road, we're aware of them before we're asked to vote for approval to take on a road that could potentially result in substantial costs to this county. So, I appreciate my colleagues for bringing these concerns forward, and I'm glad we have a chance to vote on it.
Uh, just like I say, I, I agree, I think it's something, but, you know, I, I think we definitely need to address policy and stuff because, um, you know, the, the sooner the developer can get us to take over the road, and they're doing phase two, three, four, five, and six, the more damage they do to it, and we're on the hook for repairing it. So, uh, you know, I, I think we've definitely gotta look at when we accept these roads and make sure that we're not accepting them and repairing all their damage that they do on the rest of the phases. Then we put all, all of our citizens out there on the hook for taking care of that when the developer should be.
I think we're unanimous on that.
I do, I do have something.
Dr. Blackwell?
Uh, per Mr. Johnson's point, I think, uh, Councilman Hamilton just answered it for me. I was just concerned, I certainly appreciate Ms. Love's concerns, and I agree with it. Do we have any legal issue? Because you mentioned they've done the eighty percent, they've, they've done the two years or whatever. I mean, is there some written agreement that says we're not allowed to, to hold off a little bit?
It's up to council to decide when you would want to accept the road, absolutely, and I don't wanna, I mean, speak, you know, any legal thing, but definitely everything that we present to you is, is left up to your discretion, the timing of when you want to consider something. In this particular case, we actually have a certified check, so there's not a time element attached. Most commonly, we have a letter of credit, which is also tied to that two-year date. And that letter of credit, uh, has an expiration date. At the end of the two years, the developer decides if they want to extend it. This is the best case that we could possibly have, we have a certified check for that bond, that coverage, for them to complete it properly, uh, and we actually get to hold that check in comparison to a letter of credit which would have an expiration date. So this is the ideal situation where we actually hold the money until you're satisfied for us to release it.
Would seem to me that changing of the policy would include changing the whole letter of credit issued here for us. The motion is to defer, would you clarify the time period?
I would like to defer it until, um, the subdivision is complete.
You mean all phases?
There's only two, they've got just a little ways to go.
I'm fine with that, the second?
You have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. New business number four. Counsel to approve authorization for negotiations regarding R F Q number twenty-six-oh-nine for architectural and engineering services for the renovation of the Main Street Children's Museum located in Rock Hill. Do we have a motion?
What, what number was that originally?
Twenty-six.
That was number twenty-six on page fifteen.
Up in Children's Museum.
It is now new business number four.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, Mr. Winkler?
I'm not sure, I didn't ask to have it, have it pulled out, so I'm not sure why, but I know the museum had some water damage that wasn't planned, it's unfortunate. It was a very popular museum, my grandchildren, when they were younger, loved it. And I'm pretty sure, um, someone sitting out there in the audience can answer this better than me, but, uh, there was some insurance settlement probably, and some other money that came from some of that. Um, and this is just to start the process of getting that museum back open for our citizens, so I support it.
Let me, um.
Dr. Blackwell?
I was the one that asked it to get pulled, as I was reading it over, I'm correct, it was water damage, I think, from an owner above. And first thing that came to mind was, well, why are we having to pay for it? But that aside, since it's renovations, I thought, why are we having to hire an architect to do this? I know we set money aside some months ago, but it's like, if we're just renovating what we've already done, why do we need an architect?
I think anytime we do anything structurally, you gotta bring in an architect, so, I mean, that, that, I know it's in the city of Rock Hill, but I'm sure they, we required at the county level too, I believe, if someone's redoing a, a large building, they've gotta have an architectural drawing, and stamped engineers, and whatever else to approve all that, make sure it's.
E- even if you're just repairing and going back to exactly the same thing?
I think probably so, but.
Who on staff can answer that question? Mr. Tilly?
First of all, I want to be very clear, uh, this is being paid for through insurance. We, uh, are, uh, subrogating it, working with our insurance company, and working out all the details. That's one of the reasons it's taking a long time.
Are you, I don't wanna interrupt you, are you saying we're paying for it, and then the other insurance company will get involved later, or?
Our, our insurance, maybe you, you've been working with, our insurance would pay for it and then get it from.
Reimbursement after the fact?
They're subrogating, um, the insurance reserve fund is subrogating with Hartford, who is the holder of the original, who did the damage.
Okay.
The person that did the damage is responsible, in the knowledge and responsibility.
Okay.
And we're not going above and beyond that, it's not gonna be additional taxpayer money, it's all gonna be insurance-funded.
Correct.
But I guess this is policy per what Mr. Winkler's saying, I, I just don't get why we gotta get an architect to put everything back the way it was.
Well, some of it, there's actually more damage that was never done originally. We have historic plaster ceilings that were damaged, they were never in the original specifications. So all of that has to be redrawn, as well as they have to check code, make sure everything is up to code, because code has changed in nine years, um, make sure the H V A C, all the electrical, everything meets requirements per county.
Well, I think it's a great asset, but I just, it's still kinda, whatever.
Okay, anyway, Mr. Roddy?
I just wanna say, this sounds like a no-brainer, we get to spend somebody else's money at this point. We spend an insurance company's money, I guess at this point it's just procedural that we do it because it's not costing us anything, and that's why you have insurance for, for situations like this, so I'm all in favor for that one.
Anyone else? I think we, I think we should all remember, we spend other people's money every time we vote. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports, Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to offer an amendment if I could, I'm just kidding. But, uh.
Have a second.
But, uh, talking about our public safety meeting on Friday, April fifth, we, uh, for, it's kind of a new committee, so we got a reminder from Amanda Foster, our Director of Fire Safety, about the ten-year plan, you know, which included also, consider a dedicated study of Piedmont EMS to include the agency's service demand, current deployment strategy, and performance by geographic region, uh, regions. Uh, we talked about increasing recruitment incentives, since volunteer, uh, members are getting tougher to find. We did have an open forum to get more feedback from the fire chiefs. We discussed a fire boat for York County that staff is gonna research, the cost, maintenance, storage, all aspects of that, and also looking into an M O U with Mecklenburg County to possibly not have to get a fire boat. And we, um, reviewed and recommended the pay grades and job descriptions of the fire physicians, um, approved by the M G T. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. Finance and Operations Committee.
Finance and Operations met today at five-fifteen, and we considered applications for boards to include York County and Cultural, Culture and Heritage Commission, we deferred that, um, because we have additional applicants. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, Natalie Hoekstra, um, was appointed to be, to serve a second term from the hospitality industry. Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, Alicia Muldroff, I may be getting all these names wrong, Brian Wacaster, and Rob Cooper.
Ms. Cox, can you give the districts?
Yep, Alicia is from District Four, Brian Wacaster's District Six, Rob Cooper is at-large, they're all were recommended for a second term. Otava Regional Workforce Investment Board, Patricia Leach, it was approved for a first term, that was not district-specific. York County Council on Aging, Jane Waszuluski was approved for a first term, also not district-specific. Rock Hill C V B, Lori Helms for District Seven was, was approved for a second term. We also discussed revisions to the ethics policy and review of the parliamentary procedures, and asked our county attorney to review the parliamentary side of things, and help us, um, start, uh, a potential, um, policy for us to consider later. We did look at the ethics side of things, and what we decided was that we think that we could do a little bit better on our ethics revisions, and so what is going to be proposed? And we will have, um, our county attorney look at this and give us, uh, a potential policy for folks to review after the next F and O. But basically, the gist of it was, is that council members and members of all boards and commissions be required to publicly disclose, disclose any business relationships that they, or their immediate family spouse, which will include spouse, children, father, mother, sibling, has with the applicant, or any financial interest he or she may have, um, with respect to the matter before them. Typically, right now, it's left up to the individual. with respect to the matter before them. Typically, right now, it's left up to the individual to decide whether or not to, to recuse themselves, which, which is not going to change here, but it, but what we're looking at is requiring the disclosure publicly before a vote and before a meeting, so that at least that's out there, and folks can determine whether or not there's, there's a bias themselves when they make their own vote. And we've talked a little bit about how to, how to enforce that. We talked about an enforcement measure on, on a matter related to that. And we also talked about, got a general finance update, which I understand we're going to get the details of at our first workshop.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, new non-agenda comments. Mr. Winkler?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone out there that, and maybe not remind you, but let you know that one of our towns or cities here in York County has been nominated by USA Today as one of their 10 Best Reader's Choice Travel Awards, and that's the city of York. You can go to 10best.com and vote for it. You can go to USA Today and look it up and vote for it. The last time I looked, we were number 11 out of the 20 that were nominated, so we need a few more votes there. But that's something that's, that's a, you know, a big deal for us in the county here, and it's, it's right here in, in good old District Three, but it's in York County. So, let's go out and support one of our municipalities that's in the running to be one of the 10 best by USA Today.
Anyone else? Ms. Love?
I would like to ask something of county management. And if I could get this just provided to all of council, I would like to know the countywide, not fire tax districts, but the countywide taxes that are collected. I would like to go back to, from 2013 to present and find out how much has been collected, and how much has not been allocated out of that account. So, if I could get like a year, a year, by year, and then I would like the, the breakdown of what has not been allocated. If you could include with that a, a breakdown of what is allocated each year to all of our fire departments, that would be, that would be helpful.
Anything else?
That's it.
Anyone?
I got one thing.
Ms. Cox? So, I mentioned this earlier in, in our discussion. I got a call from an individual who, like I said, lives on Bookout Road. There were several folks who got rained out, basically couldn't get to their house. And thanks to York County Sheriff's Department, Ann Ar, and Chuck, who put out posts on Facebook, she was able to get information about the condition of that road and not drive down it, which could have been a, a big problem. One of the things that I know that our notify me, I would just like staff to please take a look at that and see if what is proposed is actually making it to the, to the text for the notify me that we spent a lot of time on, because I think it's critically important if folks sign up for that, that they get that notice. And, and I would ask that we review that.
Anyone else? Dr. Blackwell?
Uh, per Mrs. Cox, the Sheriff's Office, which I'm always glad to commend for their job that they do for us, I feel guilty if I don't have a shout-out for this Rock Hill Police Department that helped out when my neighborhood, I couldn't get back to my house Saturday after leaving a Republican committee meeting or conference meeting, and I was greeted with a Cataba River running right across my road, which, it looked that way. I, I live in Witchwood, but I appreciate their quick assistance and patience.
We need some stormwater revisions on that.
Uh, no, not really. That's, that's another issue.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, we don't always agree on everything up here, but for the most part, everyone has the best interests of the people of this county in, in heart, or at heart. But we're only as good as our information, and tonight, we heard from a lot of people with very informed opinions on matters of importance that were before us. And I just want to say, it's very important that that continues, and we do hear from people. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight and participated in the discussion, because I think it was productive.
Agreed. We have no citizen, no one signed up for citizen, citizen concerns? Do we have a motion for executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I think the young lady on the front row raised her hand.
Come to the podium. I want to warn you, we're not allowed to answer you back, but you can certainly ask your question.
My name is Christine Baldisi. I live at 2037 Curry Lane in Lake Wiley. One of the things that I do within my community, as I am a board president for my neighborhood, is we send both an email blast out, but we also give people the ability to see what our agenda is at our board meetings. God help me. Is that something that you are able to allow us to see what the agenda is? So, that way, I know you were, and you have to answer me. What I'm thinking is, is I know we were all speaking to, you were all speaking today, is that you have this agenda here, and you were all speaking to the fact that sometimes you don't hear things until it's already happened in the first meeting. And I apologize, because I've just started coming to the council meetings recently. Is there a way for us to go get on an email list?
There certainly is, and I would encourage you to talk to Ms. Brogdon at the end of the table. We emailed these out. You can join that list, and we are happy to have you here, and thank you for attending our meetings.
Okay. My apologies, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. I move a go in the executive session to receive legal advice on condemnation project 11149-004, tracks 142 and 143, receipt of legal advice on the planning commission process, and receipt of legal advice in EEOC claim regarding purchasing manager position and contractual matter, prospective C-fund expenditure issue.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We will begin executive session at 8:45. The council has, the council has come out of executive session. Are there any motions?
Yes, sir. Motion to authorize condemnation project number 11149-004, tracks 142 and 143.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.